All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the September 25th, 2024 meeting of the Wilmington School Committee. All members are in attendance. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Keep going.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
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 Throwing us off a little bit right at the beginning. That brings us to approval of items by consensus. We have approval of minutes, September 11th, 2024, to have a motion. Dr. Bryson, second by Mr. Ragsdale. All those in favor? Unanimous. We have approval of DECA field trip to Boston on February 27th, 2025 through March 1st, 2025. Is there a motion? Mr. Samaha, second. Mr. Golden, questions, comments? All those in favor? Unanimous. DECA field trip to Orlando, Florida, April 26th, 2025 to April 30th, 2025. Do I have a motion? Mr. Turner, second. Dr. Bryson, questions? All those in favor? Unanimous. We have warrants, grants eight and nine, revolving seventeen and eighteen, local twenty-one through twenty-five, food service eleven through thirteen, circuit breaker two through four, carry forward is blank, capital four and five, special education nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and payroll eight, twenty-eight, twenty-four, and nine, eleven, 2024. Do I have a motion? Dr. Bryson, second. Mr. Ragsdale, questions? All those in favor? Unanimous.
And, Mr. Chair, I believe we skipped over the OIT surplus.
I did. Thank you. We have disposal of OIT surplus equipment. Is there a motion? Mr. Turner, second. Dr. Bryson, questions? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you for catching that. Moving along, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. There are three items under the superintendent's report tonight, all of which include some information in the packet. I'll speak to them in order, starting with the proposed set of superintendent goals for the 2024-25 school year. And this is a first read. This is, generally speaking, the time of the year in which I come before you as a committee with a proposed set of superintendent goals. There's both a memo in the packet as well as a set of the performance goals. And, you know, first off, just to start with, these are, these are, there are three goals here for this year. They could be, certainly, there could be far more goals at any given point in time. Honestly, there's obviously so much work, obviously, going on in a district. Sometimes, admittedly, as we talked about before, I struggle with identifying goals that I believe are part and parcel with my work as your superintendent. It's work that has to get done and has to get led anyway. But that being said, I did this year include a goal relative to the MSBA program, which I'll talk about in a moment. The, you know, the establishment of these goals was really based upon the consideration of feedback that some of around the table and the committee as a whole provided through the last evaluation process, further conversation with the chair and vice chair. And helpful for me, ultimately, what I want to do is to provide a set of goals that you are comfortable with as a committee and for which you can, in part of the evaluation process, evaluate my performance as your superintendent. So they're here as a first read, but certainly, at the end of the day, I want to make sure that members of the committee are comfortable, you know, ultimately supporting whatever set of goals that there are. The three, briefly, there's other information in that memo you'll see there in terms of the DESI timeline. I won't go through all of that unless there are questions, but it remains consistent and DESI's guidelines, guidance, I'm sorry, remains unchanged, really, from the past few years. The goals going in order, the first, as outlined there, is the, I would, I guess I would anchor this as more of a professional practice goal, if you will, one of the categories for which school committees can evaluate superintendents and they can have goals. The effort to continue to build out our communication efforts with the community continues to be, obviously, something that never stops and is always, can be a work in progress. As you note there, my intention to think more critically and holistically about school communication through participation in the superintendent track of the National School of Public Relations Association. It's not an organization I'm familiar with, but doing a little more exploration around it certainly seems to be a pretty robust program that will help districts like ours that do not have a public relations arm or department or division. So I learned a little bit more in terms of the thinking around the rationale and how that can tie to various standards in the evaluation process. The second is fitting for its alignment for tonight and one of the next items in the new business around school safety and security. As outlined, goal number two identifies a couple of different pieces that together are under the umbrella of student school safety and security, and that is our efforts as a district around pursuing safety audit. Talk a little bit more about that in the presentation that follows, or certainly can take questions now. Engaging in tabletop exercise and our continual work around reunification planning. Suffice to say that all of this is in partnership with our local police and fire folks, many of whom are here tonight, but we continue as a school district to look forward to how we can best enhance our preparedness. And this is, this is a proposed goal number two for your consideration. And then goal number three, it does bring into focus, again, the work around the school building project, the elementary school building project. You know, serving as both your superintendent but also this, the dual role of the chair of the building committee, even following the October 8th decision by the building committee, this work will only ramp up. This work is only going to continue, far from it to be stopped and stalled. And so I've learned an awful lot over the course of the past year in terms of the consumption of time that this project takes. I don't see that changing at all, at all, as we move forward. And so, based upon, again, some of the conversations, it seemed, it seemed appropriate to include it here as a proposed goal. So with that, I'm certainly happy to take questions. Folks have comments or any other feedback, again, with the eye of getting to a place that you're comfortable with, with a set of goals of approving.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Questions, comments from the committee? Mr. Samaha.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate these goals. I support each of them. I had a couple of questions. One of my questions, and I'm not saying that you need, that it should be in there, but one of the things that I noticed is going through this is none of the goals are tied to any sort of academic thing, for lack of a better term. I know in the past, there's been goals around, like, the middle school program review, the high school program review, leadership walkthroughs of classrooms. And I was just wondering if you could just give us a little bit of background about why you chose not to include something like that.
Sure, sure. And I should have, I should have led with including that as a, as a sort of a preface for that because there is a, there certainly was a discussion we had at this table last year around, I'll go in order, the middle school program review. The middle school, just, I'll comment on that specifically first. Middle school certainly will continue to require focus and attention and support with, in partnership with Ms. Elliott and the leadership team at the middle school. You know, the work that was, that came out of that review, such as the advisory program, such as the intervention block or win block, as we've called it, just amongst others, and first and foremost, probably, which I should have said, and that's the data analysis that Ms. Elliott has been leading, all of that is ongoing. So we actually, I did think about including that as a goal. I did talk with Ms. Elliott about that. I guess what, what sort of held me back from doing so is also in part, not just that work is continuing, but, but also, we are, you know, at a juncture here in terms of leadership in the, in the, in the school with two, you know, two interim administrators at the AP and principal role. And so I don't think right this moment is a time for new initiative or change. Stability and seeking, you know, a stable leadership team moving forward will be while all that work continues. So that's why I didn't include it here as a, as a particular goal. The walkthroughs, just, you mentioned that, and thank you for doing so. Those I plan to continue. In fact, today, started the scheduling process to try and get to all eight schools. So it could have been a goal, and it could certainly be if that, if that's, if there's a will for that, but I, again, it's, it's work that's, it's going to happen, and I just didn't think it was suffice, or sufficient, rather, to sort of identify it as its own goal. But I do acknowledge what you said around, there's not a specific tie in here to, say, a marker around improvement in, you know, a range of student learning on a particular, and, and that's fair, and that's fair. And I certainly want to think about that if there's a desire to have such. Thank you. Thank you.
So, Turner, and then we'll go to Dr. McCauley.
So as a follow-up to that, one of the things that came to mind when looking at these goals and thinking about that, that topic, but also other topics that had some initial activities last year, it might be useful for us to think, so we have a two-year review cycle, having not necessarily a stack of goals, but at least forward-thinking to, okay, assuming all else stays the same, my goals for next year would line up towards this sort of reverting to these topics or working on those topics, and potentially even if we're one ambitious, or one, if one were ambitious, looking at strategic goals and simply laying out for five years. Okay, we did our strategic goals, a month or two after you looked through and say, okay, how am I going to line up with these sorts of things? And you could map your goals longer term. And if there were opportunities, in the same way we talk about strategic goals, as sometimes they shift in the actual actions and activities, your goals could have that same sort of shifting. And so it wouldn't be locked in stone, but it would be a way to be, have a, have a longer view towards those sorts of topics. I think that would be helpful. And, and certainly, some of the things that we were working on last year, I think, are very, very valuable, and we do want to keep going, pushing forward with those at the right moment in time.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Yeah, so, read the goals. I agree with all the ones that you put in there. I thought they were very relevant to, you know, things that we need to tackle as a district right now. The one I wanted to talk a little bit more about was around the communications course goal. I thought it was great that you're going to take the course, and there'll be a focus on that, and understand the challenges of a small district and handling that. What I was wondering, though, was, it's good to take the course, but then what are your ideas and thoughts on what you're going to do with the information in the course, and maybe including that in the goal? I mean, it could be at a very high level, because you won't know until you're actually there, but maybe adding some of that follow-through, your ideas to that potentially.
Well, so that raises, that's a great point. And there is a, there's certainly an intersection here with one of our initiatives in the strategic plan around communication. So there certainly, very easily could be a marriage, if you will, of both the work that we have, which, in fairness, will also be, you know, on the shoulders of other school and district leaders for that communications goal in the strategic plan. The marriage could be some of the take, the key takeaways from strategies that are shared in this course that I could then bring and leverage with the outcomes of the communication, if that makes sense. And so I think, I could certainly envision formulating, or adding, I'm sorry, to this goal, something that identifies sort of an action plan in concert with the objective of the strategic plan, sort of as, as creating a new communication plan, really, for, for the district. So that would be a tangible outcome, more than, you know, just to participate in the course, and that's something certainly I could add if the, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, no, that, that sounds like a great idea to me. Thanks.
Dr. Bryson.
So I won't repeat what my colleagues have said. I would like to see, I think, the Wilmington Middle School Program Review continued. One, because it was rated as significant progress, and I'd love to get us to a sort of a met point. And I think, to your point about the administration, I completely understand that, which also makes me think even more reason for us to make sure that there's still a pretty significant, serious focus there, because the progress monitoring and all those other pieces that are ongoing are, obviously, sit with a lot of the teachers, too. So it's not, so I understand the leadership piece, but I feel like if any school right now needs that support, it's going to be the middle school. So I'd like to see something in there about that, if my colleagues agree.
Thank you.
I feel like I've ignored this side of the table.
Sorry.
Sure, I'll give some thoughts. Coming up with just a few goals each year, it always seems difficult, because you could easily put twenty things on a, on a list like this. So let me talk a little bit about the, the first one. I think I share some of Mike's points about focusing on the outcomes that we're looking for, rather than just kind of like the inputs, because, you know, the, the, to me, the participating in the, in the superintendent track, that's not the goal, that's the means. That's the means by which we, you know, are trying to accomplish a goal. And, and so some of the things you just talked about, I think, of, in terms of what we're, sort of what we're hoping to get out of the end of it. And, and I think that I would maybe like to see this goal kind of reframed in a district communication plan, or some kind of report out of, like, lessons learned, like, as the basis of this, these are going to be our new kind of communication policies or best practices for the, for the district. And that the attendance of this is kind of subsidiary to the benefit that we are actually aiming for towards the district, rather than the goal, rather than being like the goal itself.
Sure.
I was also thinking back at some of last year's goals, which, which, you know, we weren't able to get to all of them. We, you know, recall that, that's part of why we have the building, the building projects on this year, because we recognize that it's just like, we can't, we can't have that just going simultaneously in parallel and not recognize that. But some of the other goals that we looked at last year that we, when we came to the evaluation, we said, like, all right, we understand that there just was not time to get to all of these because of this other important work, but it was still important things. And I think we still thought that that was going to carry forward, that there was the review of the instructional leadership model in the district, which seemed, you know, which was, I think, we all thought an important goal, but just wasn't able to be completed. I think it was the walkthrough of all the buildings. I mean, the, the goals that we looked at last year, I think that we were hoping that, even though it made sense that we weren't able to get to all of them, that we would still be able to kind of carry some of that work forward into this year. I don't know if that means that it, that they become formal goals here. Again, you know, you have to, always have to be careful about, like, goal expansion. I'm not suddenly suggesting we need five or six goals here for the, for this project. But I think I would still like to see something reflected as far as finishing or getting to the completion of them, because I don't like the idea that you did all this work last year, but then we kind of never brought it all together, especially, I think, on the instructional leadership aspect, because that was something that we really thought was important, especially as we possibly, a few years down the road, may have to do some re, you know, rejiggering of how the, of how the schools work once we get into construction. All right, I'll stop there. Those are some of my initial thoughts.
Thank you.
I want to just...
And I guess, oh, sorry. To not be the odd man out, you know, I'll say that I agree pretty generally, I think, with, with what my colleagues have said so far, but especially about the middle school. But I will say, for the record, rather than question, that, you know, being on the school building committee, I'm sure Mr. Rags and I could both agree that it's been a ton of work, and, and we recognize that for sure. I recognize that for sure. So I really liked that that was a goal, and I think that kind of speaks to having specific and concrete goals, because even if it were a goal or not, you're going to be, you're going to be there in those meetings, right? So I think it was a smart thing to do, to have that listed in there, and it kind of creates mental space to then think about other, other goals.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
All right. One follow-up on the communication thing. I think to Dr. McCauley and Mr. Ragsdale's points, on the rationale, the purpose there really does speak to me to what the goal is, but then in terms of the tiers of communication, like the district website versus the principal memos that go out every week versus crisis communication in a moment, those are kind of three different areas to target, and building out each of them differently does line up even as to the classes that are specifically scheduled. So I think, thinking of it in those sorts of terms, towards Mr. Ragsdale's point about the, the purpose of it is to build out and strengthen these sorts of areas where we've got things in place, but it can get better, makes a lot of sense. And then to the, to the point about the other goals, I, I do have a concern with your bandwidth. And, and the things that were started last year that aren't done, if we really want to prioritize them, we should either move one of these to next year, or clearly assign those to next year and say, okay, the expectation is, if we accept these three, four with the middle school, that as part of next year, these things are there. Maybe the timing of the leadership review makes more sense as you get closer to the, to a potential new building.
Right.
So there may be good rational reasons for how you pick amongst those, but in some ways, you've already written your goals for next year. Good job.
Well, but, if I may, yeah, the, the idea comes back to, I suppose, in thinking about it, of this two-year window of time, as opposed to just a one, especially in, you know, in, given the fact that this is a two-year cycle that we're, we're starting for the evaluation. So to have that latitude to think in that, in that way makes certainly a lot of sense, and not sort of thinking about these as just compressed into ten months or nine months, or whatever it is, actually. So, so thank you for, for the feedback. Anything else? Mr. Chair, sorry.
You feel like you've got everything you need?
I, I do. I think what I will, I will do, if it's all right with the committee, I'll, I'll fast-track some refinements of these, share it with the chair and vice chair, especially given my, my absence in the next meeting, but certainly the, the hope that the committee is comfortable approving at the next meeting, you know, a slightly revised set of goals, that would be great. Okay. Okay. Good. Thank you. Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you.
Item, the second item tonight, Wildwood MSBA update. There's, well, a lot going on. There's not really a ton to share tonight, and there's nothing extensive in the packet except a snapshot of more current, although these are now in the rearview mirror, of the, some of the metrics coming in in the Mentimeter platform. So outreach is continuing with the project. As you know, we took a pause to delay any action decision by the school building committee until October the 8th, which is soon approaching. The center piece, the central piece or rationale for that delay was to try and secure greater public engagement, community engagement. And from all accounts, where I sit, I think that's happening. Folks were looking for that to happen. There's actual metrics in this Mentimeter platform that is speaking to that. We have well over, well over a thousand responses now. It's not captured in this, this particular version, but I can tell you, having seen some updates, it's well over a thousand with still, you know, a little bit of time here to go. As a, as a plug, if I can, that survey, the Mentimeter survey platform closes on October the 1st, and then that information will be compiled and shared with members of the school building committee in advance of the October 8th decision, of which one, you know, one of the remaining options has to be decided upon. There is, there's going to be outreach again this, this weekend, tomorrow, sorry, Saturday at Fall Fest. We will have a table there as well. I look forward to joining some of the folks there Saturday morning for that. So continuing the opportunities to get the word out, we did hold a community forum, and I know that many of you around the table were there. We had approximately forty-five, give or take, members of the community who were in attendance. It was recorded, again, through partnership with WCTV. For anyone who wasn't able to attend, that recording is out there. I think it was a, it was a, an effective opportunity, fruitful opportunity to, again, provide an update. We also visited the senior center the following day. So last Thursday, we had probably about forty or so folks in attendance. I know some of you were there as well. Dr. Bryson, Mr. Golden, was, I think that might have been it, but it was great to have...
Chair, who's the chair, was that?
Yeah, sorry. (laughing).
And Mr. Ragsdale.
Sorry.
All right.
There were forty-five people, and it was hard to see everyone. But it's certainly another important opportunity for, for outreach there. So moving ahead, and the next time that this committee convenes, we'll obviously be at a point in time in which the decision around the final option will have been made. So we'll keep you posted on that.
Good.
And then the third item, just a great opportunity for shout-out around the Boston Magazine ranking in your packet as the flyer. It's already been socialized, but just with the cameras on, and for those watching, the opportunity to give a shout-out to not just the high school, but I'd like to say and suggest really our staff throughout the school district. Students can only be successful through, obviously, the, the pathway that brings them to the point of where they, where they land, and the high school ranking is a testament to the strong partnership, I think, with our, our community members, parents and guardians and caregivers, our educators, our staff. As the flyer notes, Wilmington High School was ranked thirty-eight out of one hundred and fifty high schools in the greater Boston area on Boston Magazine's list. That placed Wilmington High School in the top twenty-five of all high schools in the greater Boston area. That was up fifty, from fiftieth last year. So just like we talked about with MCAS, rankings are but one measure of performance and success, but, you know, based upon a number of different factors, I think we should be quite proud with this. There's, there's a lot of very great high schools and high, and public school systems in the greater Boston area for which this is comparing to. Some of the data, well, I don't understand the exact way that the metrics or their model works. I'll certainly offer that. It is an evaluation of MCAS, student-teacher ratios, average class size, amongst other, other factors. So, again, kudos to all of those that was possible, and we're proud of where this lands, and I think bodes well for those who are looking for a new home, a new community, and a new school system to possibly land. So just a great opportunity to bring attention to that. And unless there's questions on any of those items, thank you.
Thank you. Kudos to Mr. Gendron and his team, Eric Isbell, and Mr. Turner.
I do think you definitely want to mention the last point on that slide as well, because I think that's a very important one. Credit to the district, particularly Struggerio and yourself and the, and the entire team. The idea that Wilmington High School is one of the, the twelve high schools noted as best bang for the buck, coming as we are soon to the budget season, I think that's something that should be highlighted on the bottom of every slide that you present later. I think that's a real credit and testament to the district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Brand.
Michael has a question.
Oh, sorry. Dr. McCauley, I didn't see your hand.
It's okay. I have a few questions about the MSBA. Thanks for the update. So I, I think it's more, like, we're all kind of really keyed in on what's going on, but other people might be tuning in here and not really keyed in on what's exactly going on with the building committee. So I was just wondering if you can explain a few things for the audiences. The Mentimeter survey, you know, when I look at it, I see there's K through five, and then K through three is number two, but it wasn't like you only had to pick one, right? It was like a rank choice kind of voting, in a way?
Right. Right. It wasn't just one, but sort of ranked in priority, as you, as you indicated. So it really is a, you know, and to back up, the Mentimeter platform has been the consistent tool over time that the project has, has been using to try and gather feedback. It's been used consistently through community forums, and, and continues through this more focused outreach with the community. It, it really probes the ideas of people's interest in school consolidation with some of the options that's in there. It probes the interest in the possibility of including a full-size high school gymnasium if a pre-K five option is selected. But it does ask people's opinions on sort of that prioritization of, of the options that are remaining. So, you know, it is, I think most importantly to say, it is one piece of information that I believe, anyway, that members of the building committee can and should be considering as, as part of an ultimate decision. The decision of the building committee does not sit squarely on the results of this survey or the results therein. It's one piece of information, of a lot of information that has come at the committee and for consideration over time. Ultimately, the community's way in to decide upon the future of this project will come after one preferred option is selected and when people are asked to go to, you know, to town meeting to vote. That's where certainly the, the voice and vote of, and the count of town membership will, will certainly count. So I think it's, you know, and, and again, just to, to take this opportunity, well over a thousand people who have weighed in on this Mentimeter platform, you can access it through a QR code, or there's a link. We've tried to offer both versions for people to access. But as our consultants have said, they, they have not seen in projects and communities they've been in, this level of community engagement at this point in a project, still rather early. So I think that's kudos to people's interest in this project across our community, and it's great to see.
Yeah, no, thanks for that. Yeah, when I was looking at the data, it seemed like the majority of the respondents wanted as much consolidation and a newer building as possible. When you look at that, kind of the rankings of, like, new K through five, then new K three, and then renovate pre-K through five, right, which is great. So you already mentioned that there's a meeting coming up on October 8th.
Right.
I was wondering if there's members of the community that kind of have questions about the upcoming vote, or kind of feel strongly and want to express their opinions? What's the best way of contacting the building subcommittee?
So there are a couple of things, first off, with that October 8th meeting, with much consideration. All of those meetings have and will continue to be public, and there's always public comment. always public comment in those meetings. The decision has already been made to push up in the agenda, the public comment on the evening of October the eighth, so as to provide the members of the building committee with an opportunity, sort of one final time before this decision is made on which, you know, and any comments or feedback that they have. In terms of questions, we continue to draw attention to the email that we have on our project website that people can write in. That information is shared with the building committee members and wherein, as it's appropriate, will be used to shape frequently asked questions as we continue to, you know, post information to try and elevate everyone's understanding who's interested in, in the project. So, that, that email address is directly on the link, this is off of the district's webpage and certainly will draw people's attention to that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll have to make sure I didn't miss anybody again. Okay.
Sorry. Can I? Just one quick thing. Well, I'm just pulling up the.
I didn't miss you though. You didn't have your hand up.
I didn't, no, because I was looking.
Please, of course.
I just have up the, the Wildwood Building Project site and the ad, the email address. Did we say, this wasn't said out loud, was it? Okay. Because I was looking for it, so I was making sure. So that would be the email that we would send, that would send questions to, that would go to the whole committee.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
I just want to throw one more thing out there. Thank you for bringing this, you know, work of the committee forward too as well. You know, I will say, the survey that we've done so far, it isn't a scientific poll, right? Polls are an imperfect science, but we are getting a very clear message today. I'll report this from what we've seen in the committee and you have those materials too. We're getting a very clear message from the town and from respondents about what they want to see happen and which decision, which preferred option is their preferred option. So, you know, I think we, you know, there's a clear message being sent and it's on the committee to hear it. So, that's my thought.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Brand. Thank you. Appreciate the updates. Moving along, that brings us to the public comment portion of the evening. We did receive one comment that was submitted in advance and that is in the packet. So if there's anybody who would like to make public comment, we will also, I know we have some guests here, we can make some time available after the fact if you guys are willing. Public comment?
Yeah, I'd actually like to speak after I hear it from everybody, if that's possible.
Sure. You can speak now and they can address your comments in their, in their remarks and then if they don't, then certainly we could give you a few minutes at the end if that works?
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
PhilDebye, five twenty-four, Shawshank Ave. Obviously, I can only assume what's going to come up and I'll speak on it. I just wrote this up real quick. I'm just going to read it. First, I'd like to say thank you to Glenn for reaching out to me via email, showing that you're willing to talk about my concerns. Sometimes it's aggravating coming to these meetings and you say public comment, but you don't get answers right away and you got to wait for them, so I appreciate that, Glenn. As far as what we talked about last time, a little bit about the locks on the doors in the elementary schools and the middle schools. There's the main door in the front, the two adjoining doors in the back. That's my concern is that these back doors don't lock. I'm assuming they're going to come up and briefly I talked to the lieutenant and we're going to talk about codes tonight, how something's a code violation or whatever. So, I'm just going to address that real quick, my opinion about the codes and I'd like to see these codes on paper, what numbers they are referencing and what codebooks they are located in. These are outdated codes from the nineties if they're the fire codes. They're, all, most of them are pre-collabine. You don't see a lot of fires anymore. Now you're seeing school shootings. You see a lot more school shootings than fires nowadays. An easy way to prove that is if we walk up in this updated building, which is the high school, you're not going to see these adjoining doors in every classroom. So how is it against code in an elementary school, but not against code in a high school? And with that being said, I know it's because that's an existing door, right? So if it's an existing door, we can't block it. I understand that. So, we can either remove the door, make it permanently not a door anymore, or we can do temporary locks. Glenn, I sent you the email with just a, a small example of temporary locks. There's a hundred different kinds of temporary locks and, so the, the lock wouldn't be on the physical door, it'd be next to the door in a lockdown situation. If it goes against the loudspeaker that does a lockdown situation, a teacher can take something off a wall and lock the door. It's, is, and that to me wouldn't be against code, because how can you temporarily barricade a door in a lockdown situation with chairs and stuff, but you can't take something off the wall and secure the door, right? I'm probably going to say things multiple times because it's coming to me as I go, but these are outdated codes from the nineties, made for fires. You see a lot more school shootings. An easy way to prove that is walk through the newly-built building. Now, if we cannot lock these doors because they're already existing, we need to purchase temporary locks that we can install on a lockdown basis. I've sent an example to Glenn, but there are hundreds of options, which can't be against code because we temporarily barricade doors. What's the difference? Even if you guys stand on the fact that it's a code, so you're not going to do anything, you could even just lock the doors on the left side, which would allow students to walk to the right in the case of a fire, but, but prevent a shooter to walk to the left. So, if we lock every door on the left, you're going to drop the percentage depending on which way the shooter comes in. So you still have your two egresses. You've got the main door and you've got the side door. The third door's locked all the time. So, if the shooter comes in this way, he can't go left. If he comes in from that way, you're screwed, but you still have, you're still dropping your percentages depending on which way he comes in. An improvement like this would drop the percentage of movement depending on what side the shooter starts from. This will leave two ways out of egress and just eliminate the useless third door. I also believe that the fire codes are room, for rooms with fifty or more children. And if we have fifty children per one teacher, we have another issue to address. I understand we, there were a lot of mistakes from law enforcement at Uvalde, but prior to them arriving, one of the issues was that 112 was locked properly from the hallway. 111 door did not lock due to a mechanical issue from the hallway. So 111, it wouldn't lock. It was a mechanical issue with the door. 112 was locked, okay, properly. But when he, when, once 111 was compromised from the hallway, it automatically compromised 112 due to adjoining doors. The classroom children of 112 might still be alive today if the adjoining doors were secure, removed or secured. I've heard from inside sources that the, those back doors don't get barricaded sometimes during lockdown drills, only the front one does that is the only one that has a lock on it. But I've also heard that sometimes those doorknobs in those back two doors will be tied together, locking them. So I'm not sure what's going on in the drills exactly. I know there will always be flaws in the system, but the lack of the locking capability is crazy to me. There's a safety issue in these buildings, which is possibly putting our children, our children at risk. As the school committee, it's your job to figure out how to solve this problem, not just pass the buck saying that we can't do anything because of the codes. There's something that can be done, we just have to figure out what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other public comments? Please.
Melissa Plowman, one fifty-three Main Street. I'm here to voice my strong support of a K to five consolidation project as both fiscally wise and educationally imperative for our town. I also want to add that I have worked alongside many of the individuals sitting here and the Wildwood Building Committee folks who will be tasked with the final vote for what this project will entail. And I will remind people that this project has been in the minds and the hearts of these people across various departments in the town for years at this point. Countless hours of thought, meetings, discussion, research and consideration have gone into this, as well as crisis management and short-term problem solving because of the failure to make such changes in years past. We cannot follow that same path. We must learn from the decisions to forego needed change as we did in the past and begin to make decisions for our future that not only meet the growing needs of our children educationally, but that are also financially responsible for everybody. I'm here to say that I trust very much the decision that those who will have the vote on this and believe that all have taken the future of our town into consideration and are looking ahead, not behind at what it used to be like or ways that we could or should preserve what was. This is and should be a forward-looking discussion and a decision. Therefore, I support consolidation through fifth grade. Doing so would allow the following advantageous things to occur. We address three out of six of the rapidly aging and deteriorating elementary schools altogether, while we have the MSBA's support financially to our advantage. This is fiscally responsible. The cost of building is only going to rise. A project this scope will only be more costly in years to come, also fiscally responsible. The cost to operate and maintain three buildings is undoubtedly more expensive than to maintain one and consolidation of this scale would allow that, also fiscally responsible. Consolidation also allows us to begin or jump-start the process of improving school safety in our, in our town by considering infrastructure upgrades that all of our schools need to consider as soon as possible, but we could achieve that task in three out of six elementary buildings with this project, which to me is a significant win. Consolidation improves the ever-so-controversial topic of school start times, allowing most families to send multiple children to school at the same time every day, improving home life for Wilmington families. And may even lessen our need to add buses to our fleet, which we have learned is an incredible cost to this town. And how about the fact that kids don't have to up and leave a building every two years anymore? That creates angst and worry for kids and parents alike as they have to learn new routines. I want to shift gears really quickly to discuss the educational benefits of consolidation and I'll only skim the surface of that. I've learned that consolidation allows for improved collaboration and co-planning amongst educators and ed assistants. It allows for curriculum and literacy alignment. It addresses lifelong issue we've had in Wilmington of planning and providing meaningful professional development that colleagues can attend together. And I just, I know I'm out of time, I want to talk about the research that shows us the ways in which physical space impacts mood and mental health and cognitive functioning. We cannot underestimate the benefits of learning in spaces that promote social and emotional well-being. These things like natural lighting, sensory rooms, flexible learning spaces are not luxuries anymore in education, they are requirements for many of our students. I had too much to say, you guys. I may have to come back. I, I, I hear that a lot of people are concerned about our youngest learners being combined with our older learners and to that I say excellent. Excellent, because what an opportunity for peer mentoring and leadership and role modeling and evidence-based practice in education and social emotional learning. And what many people are not understanding is that within one building, there are ways to structure not only physical space, but the leadership roles and the culture within a school to create multiple schools within a school. So please, let's look forward, everyone. Let's do what the children in this town deserve. Let's shift the narrative of how Wilmington approaches hard decisions when it comes to our school buildings and let's learn from the past. I urge you, dear committee, to vote in favor of a K to five project.
Thank you.
Ryan Kessler, nineteen Adams Street. I came here also to voice my support for the consolidated K through five. Beyond that, because I feel confident that based on listening to all the committee meetings that it seems likely to be approved, what I do want to encourage this committee to do is after we approve at the next committee meeting on the eighth, is to really, you know, mobilize the parents, mobilize our community. More so the parents, because the parents really want this. This is something where I think you have a lot of, you know, stakeholders that are engaged and we really need to leverage the parents to talk to their neighbors, talk to everyone else. If you could look through the comments that are coming in through the Mentimeter, which there was, you know, ten pages or something that I saw was updated tonight, you know, a lot of the support against or the, you know, that, that don't want the most expensive option, it has to do with taxes, has to do with increased expenses. So I think we should not be, we should not underestimate an informed minority, because, you know, they can, we can get a lot of support, so we need to make sure that it's not assumed that this is automatically going to pass the town, the town meeting. So, I encourage you guys to kind of really, you know, lever, leverage and reach out to the parents. One last point, on his comments, he spoke a meeting or two ago. Encourage me to go home, look up on the website. I would encourage after today's, tonight's presentation, after his comments, it would be great to have a section on the Wilmington website, just to outline safety with the, you know, with the district's doing, what that we have done, what we'd like to do, not only so that we can educate parents, you know, anytime there's a school shooting, you want to look and see, hey, what has my community done? What has my schools done? But also, you know, as a discouragement for any would-be shooters that are looking at maybe a target that maybe aren't a student in the environment, but maybe a community member. If you, they have a safety section that clearly outlines what's going to be done, it might be as a deterrent. So, it's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. With that, that brings us to our first item of new business. We have some guests. Thank you guys for joining us and being patient. Dr. Brand is going to travel to the other end of the table. I don't know who's joining us, but you're welcome to come on up. We can pull up some extra chairs if we need them.
Well, as they're getting settled, I just want to reiterate that the school committee agreed pre-K to five consolidation was our recommendation to the building committee. And so those who are just tuning in, I just want to be sure that sometimes I think people think we're going to be voting on October eighth and there's actually a different committee called the School Building Committee, made up of many more people than are sitting around this table, although some of our members are on that committee. They will be taking the vote on October eighth. And so those of you who do have comments and obviously so much feedback, October eighth would also be a wonderful event, event, meeting to attend and to make your comments publicly. I think there will be public comment, as Dr. Brand said, prior to the vote, so I think that's a really important time. So I know sometimes we kind of skim over this and thank you, Mr. Dr. McCauley, for stopping us and saying, hey, wait a minute, we really need to make sure, because sometimes people are just tuning in right now. And so I thank the public commenters for bringing that up and bringing it come to the forefront. Thank you. And now you're settled, see? It was just kind of.
Well, thank you. This is the first item under new business tonight, district safety and security update. This, this presentation is in the, is in the slide deck and I think, you know, the, the timing of this, it is timely for its, its, its presence here tonight for, I think, a few different reasons. One, it's been, it's been probably a few years since as a school committee and community we've provided an update on the considerable ongoing work around school safety and security. And that's not just simply alone by the, the folks that work in the school district, but also with our partners here alongside me, who serve this community so very well and so very proudly with the fire and police. Obviously, the timeliness of this as well with the terrible tragedy that unfolded in Georgia just after the opening of school with that school shooting and of course, most recently, some of the community outreach and concern of which we've obviously clearly heard about here. So, I think for a number of reasons, it's timely to provide you with a brief update. And I do thank our partners here, you know, we, we have the good fortune. I, I've worked in a number of different towns on my journey in education to this point here in Wilmington. You would think that there's naturally a strong partnership with police and fire. It, it's not always the case and it's not always the case in terms of the level of collaboration that is here in Wilmington. So, if you are a parent or guardian or a community member watching or for members of the committee, you are super fortunate, because we have great folks who work alongside of the work that we try to do, specific to school safety each and every day. So, the goal tonight is to provide an overall update on, on the collaborative efforts that is ongoing around school safety, security between and with, obviously, the school department. is ongoing around school safety, security between and with, obviously, the school department, but also police, fire. And I should also note, public buildings as well, too. They're an important partner in this collective work. The presentation we'll go through will be to focus a little bit more around that partnership, share with you and those that are watching, some of the planning and coordination, some of the specific training and education for students and staff, as well as goals for the upcoming 24, 25 school year. A lot of work that this committee obviously focuses on at any point in time is around policy. What are your policies relative to particular topics? We talk about that, of course, quite frequently. There are a few policies that you, as a school committee, have and that are recommended for school committees from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Policy EB on safety programs. The brief highlight there is that the committee will comply with safety requirements established by governmental authorities, and will insist that its staff adhere to recommended safety practices as these pertain, for example, to plant, areas of instruction, transportation, et cetera. Another policy is facilities inspection. Policy EBA, the school district, in cooperation with the superintendent of public buildings, requires that all buildings under their control be inspected for safety and health conditions by the appropriate agencies. Those agencies include, but are not limited to, the Building Inspection Department, the Fire Department, the Department of Public Health, Water Department, and police, and I mentioned fire. And then finally, Policy ECA, Buildings and Ground Security. It's a little bit more extensive, rather, but ultimately, the highlight here is the committee expects close cooperation with fire and law enforcement departments throughout the community. So I think that those are just important pieces. There's a clear intersection with your role as a school committee.
Mr. Agstel?
Sorry. I would just like to request that, for those maybe who don't know everyone at the table, perhaps before we get going too far, we could have introductions of our guests.
Well, I'll jump ahead, so let's do that. And I'll jump back. So to that point, highlighted here, but I think we have one more individual along with us. Let me take this opportunity and introduce them, starting on my left, your right.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. Scott Senselbaum, U Operations, Deputy Lieutenant for the Wilmington Police Department, and former Unit Commander for the Nemlich SARS Team, which is a school threat assessment team.
Phil Cowan, the Fire Chief.
Good evening. I'm Police Chief Joe Desmond, and we appreciate you asking us to be here.
Christopher Posey, deputy fire chief.
We also have, just to point out, but they're a little bit more bashful, two of our three school resource officers here, but I do think it's great and an important opportunity for our community. So they'll maybe not talk nice about me later, but Emily, why don't you? Put you right on camera here. We are also very fortunate to have the support of the town, to have school resource officers in place. Emily Meakin is here, school resource officer, as many know, for the middle school, and Paul McGilvery, who joined the high school last year. Anthony Fiore, a colleague of theirs, is also in partnership with our elementary school. He could not be here tonight, but great assets, great resources for our community. So thank you both.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Let me just jump back for a second. I think it's just important context, because when we talk about, at least from my perspective, when we talk about school safety, you know, there are foundational elements for this work, but the reality is it never stops. I've shared this a number of times with our school leaders. It never ends. This is not work that sort of would be a parallel to say, work on a new program or a new curriculum, where you plan it, you review it, you develop, implement it, then you can walk away and move on to the next topic. That is not school safety and security. It's ongoing and continuous. And it's never complete. It is not the case, I wish it were, but it's not the case that there's one standard template, handbook, or set of policies and procedures that the Department of Education, or to my knowledge, any other agency, has been able to put forth that fits perfectly in any particular school community. That would make this a whole lot easier, but it simply doesn't exist. You know, I mentioned the partnership at the outset, but sincere in those sentiments. We work regularly throughout the school year and meet whenever it's necessary. We have the partnership, which I'll talk about in a moment, with some of our building and district committees, but at a moment's notice, as anything pops up, I know that I can pick up the phone and call folks to help problem-solve or attend to an issue. But it's far more than reactive. It's about, obviously, planning ahead as well, too. There are really three branches, if you will, or arms to, when I think about our efforts to think critically about prevention and planning for safety, security, and emergency response. Area one, as I've termed it, is the partnership with police, fire, and public buildings. I've highlighted this a couple of times. Our work is critical, and it helps myself and your leadership team make sure that we are moving forward with policies and procedures that are in line with the expectations of police, fire, public buildings, and what they know to be important in the occupancy of public buildings. Area two is District Safety Committee. We have a standing District Safety Committee that meets regularly. You can see the meeting dates there. We've just had our first meeting. Ken Lord, who I know is bouncing around here and here tonight, but he's also instrumental in helping with this work, as is Paul, and many other folks. I'll share their names in just a second. That committee comes together regularly, really as an effort to tie together the district and all eight schools and all of our departments, to make sure that there's an opportunity to discuss, plan, and be proactive around aspects of safety and security that may span the entire district. And then, more at the micro level, if the District Safety Committee is thought of as a macro view, the Building Safety Committee that are up and operating at each of our schools. Each of our schools has a Building Safety Committee in place, and really, that Building Committee is, of course, focused more on the specifics of, say, the Wildwood, or say, the Boutwell, or say, the Middle School. Each of those buildings are different, and while there are commonalities in terms of response and reaction and proaction, each of those physical plants are different, and so they have nuances that the Building Safety Committee takes an opportunity to focus more in. Here's a view of the District Safety Committee members. By design, we have one member from each of the schools, along with folks that I just mentioned, Paul and Ken, and representation from our partners with Wilmington Fire and Wilmington Police. Student and staff training, it certainly is ongoing, as we are, at this point in time, just getting the year up and running. There has been training that is rolled out for all of our staff. This is an annual requirement. We take this very seriously, and we make sure that all of our staff, no matter their role or position, are familiar with our protocols. And so this is an important focus every single year for staff. For students as well, too. Of course, for many, many years, fire drills has been a focal point, bus evacuations has been as well, too. But also, switching to the ALIS program, which is the next slide, and that's our Emergency Response Protocol. It's been a long time, I know, since Wilmington has been a partner with this ALIS program, well over a decade, I believe. But it is the Emergency Response Protocol that is embraced and supported here in the Wilmington Public Schools, and we actively, obviously, again, with our partners, make sure that we are training and educating students and staff in terms of this protocol to respond in the threat, in any kind of situation which is a threat to safety and security. And we really worked hard over the last few years to have not only members of the Wilmington Police Department trained in the ALIS protocol, but also to have a staff member or members in each school also trained, so that we can really have a train-the-trainer model. That's an important piece, as we always do, have new staff join us every year, a need for refreshment, refresher of the different protocols. It's a model that I think serves us well. Let's switch just briefly to school door safety and locks, obviously a point of some discussion and focus, and understandably so. We've worked hard throughout the school district to make sure that we have appropriate locks, that they're functioning, they meet code, and they can help in terms of the security of our school facilities. It's certainly no secret that some of the older schools present more of a challenge. They simply do. Opening a brand-new school like this one, and like will be the case soon enough, will provide an opportunity to think very differently about the alignment of locks. These folks I know can talk more about that, but it's a challenge. But we work around that challenge the best we can to make sure that we have key access, the ability to lock and secure. We're not just talking, obviously, the exterior doors, but also the interior doors. So I think it is an important piece. In terms of the interior doors, obviously, this has been a focus of some more conversation. It is true that many of our classrooms across the district have interior doors that are adjoining, but not all. But back to the partnership and the need to make sure that we are operating schools in compliance with respective codes. We obviously need to work alongside that. You can see the reference here that I know our folks from the Fire Department can speak more to, as you might have questions, but you can see the reference specifically to the fire code, as well as state building code. There's a little more text there, but these are the highlights from those respective codes that really need to guide what's in place in our schools to make sure that we're in compliance and operating a public building that is deemed safe for occupants. The goals for the 24, 25 school year, very briefly, are captured here. This goes back to my earlier comments around, we're always trying to move forward around our preparedness and our programming, identifying those things that we think can provide us with the kinds of improvements that would be beneficial across the board. These capture these, this year reunification planning. We've, obviously, with the ALIS program and protocol, talked an awful lot about what evacuation might need to look like, what lockdown might need to look like. But another important component of this is, in the event that we need to evacuate a building, which can be a range of things, from a failure of a boiler in the middle of January to something far more worse that we don't want to sort of go to and think about, a critical piece is, what does reunification actually look like? How do we take hundreds of students and reunify them with their parents or guardians? Something that you can't just leave to chance, and there have been folks who've think very critically about that. The I Love You Guys program, which we've talked about previously with this committee, is that protocol for us, and we are working hard, we will be working hard this year to make sure that throughout our staff and our district as a whole, there's a clear picture of what that would look like, should there ever be a need to reunify. That's number one. Number two is tabletop exercise. In short, you know, the opportunity, if you're not familiar with that term, or haven't participated in that, it's really a simulation in a safe space and place to try and bring together those that would be decision-makers in the event of an emergency, to walk through what that response would look like. And we are in the process of planning that with our district leadership team, again, in partnership with our police and fire colleagues. And then a security audit, number three. This is an item that may sound familiar. It was indeed included on the strategic plan that you approved a little over a year ago, but we have made the commitment to conduct an audit. We're still very much in the process of exploring who might fulfill that service. That would be a third party that would take a look at our infrastructure. So with Mr. Lord's assistance, we're in the process right now of exploring possibilities. So not a lot more to say about that, but essentially taking a look at facilities, the physical plant themselves. So that's, I know, a lot quickly, in the interest of everyone's time, but I certainly respect the fact that committee members may very well have questions around our work and for our partners here, so thanks for the opportunity to give you the update tonight.
Thank you. Who wants to kick it off? Dr. McColdy.
Sure. So, thank you for the presentation. Thank you all for coming tonight. I have a few questions. I think just the first one I have is the I Love You Guys program. What is that? Could you explain that for the community a little bit more? Like, what does that entail?
Ken, do you want to? I mean, I can, but Ken will give you a far better.
Sure, thanks. We had the opportunity, a year and a half ago, I think, to go to a training for a corporation that's made the I Love You Guys program to set up a very carefully-designed and organized reunification process. So much like ALIS has all of its tenants and rules and processes, they have this process where you have a very succinct way of dealing with the crowd, orderly entry of parents, orderly reunification with the student, where you'd have counseling services, how you organize your arrival of the bus from the kids from the other building, all of those types of things, to even just having a pre-assembled kit of all the materials you will need to do a reunification. So we have a rock box, is what they call it, a reunification kit, which has all of the materials, badges, rolls, binders, with everybody's jobs, all completely lined out, so we can just take that and start building a reunification center. It's built around using this school as the reunification site, and we also have an alternate site of Shawshank Tech should this school be unavailable. So we drill on that. We've done a tabletop exercise. We've done it with our DLT last year and our district safety committee, where we actually ran one in here as a simulation, and people got to be a student and a parent and a reunifier at the same time. So it's a very, very well-organized system. It's made by I Love You Guys. They came up with that term because the two parents that created this process lost their child in a school shooting event, and the last text they got from their daughter was, "I love you guys." So that's kind of what that is.
Okay, thanks. Then one more question. I think this might be more relevant for the WPD and other people. So we've been hearing some feedback from the community regarding concerns about what the town and the district are actively doing to prevent school shootings. So I was wondering if any of you can maybe explain further what was not presented in the slides tonight, what else that the town and district is doing to help kind of prevent this from happening.
Sure. I think one thing I would follow up with is, you know, there's this myth that, you know, these shooters aren't on anyone's radar until after the event. The fact is, when they do a deep dive afterwards, there were signs there. So threat assessment is something that we're trying to really get involved with, with the schools, with, you know, training the SROs, and trying to look for clues early on, and it's certainly not easy, you know, sometimes, but when we look at like the shooting in Maine, and even in this last shooting in Georgia, that kid was on some people's radars, but it just wasn't enough to, you know, not enough was done. And that's certainly frightening, you know, for us. We want to make sure that if those clues are there, that we do something with them. So that's kind of the one thing that wasn't mentioned in the presentation, and that is, you know, getting more involved with threat assessment.
Okay. So that's something that, if, let's say, people are noticing something in the community with someone, that definitely notify WPD and...
Absolutely. You know, obviously, we have some limits of what we can do, but if we see, you know, issues of, you know, just no socialization, or there are things that we can look for, and that, you know, staff in the school can look for, where, you know, could show a young person in crisis, and, you know, could lead to a problem.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
So, thank you all very much for your time and all of your efforts on this topic. To be very clear, there was a case a year or so ago on the South Shore, where our high school was impacted, and there was an emergency situation, and the parents rushed to the school, to the extent that they blocked access for the emergency responders. So one of the questions I would have for you is, how do we communicate to parents, both now, in advance of any sort of situation, and in the moment, to say, okay, we need you to go there, not here? I mean, there's certainly an element of communication between kids and parents, which, obviously, as any parent, you get a message, you want to react. And so how do we communicate with them, parents, now, in a calm environment? And then how do we communicate with them in the moment, so that they don't interfere with you doing the important work you need to do?
So that's something that, like Dr. Brand had brought up, the planning that we do ahead of time, as far as reunification and things like that. We use the listserv that the schools have to send out their, you know, reverse 911, so to speak. We have one as well through the town that we can initiate. One of the things that I can offer is that you could sign up for this reverse 911 as well, so it doesn't just go to your landline. You can sign up for your cellphone, your email, whatever it is. And basically, in the planning of any sort of school emergency, we have staging spots, so to speak, for the reunification. We obviously don't want everyone going to the reunification spot either. We need a kind of intermediary. So those things would be communicated as soon as we have the, at least the idea of what's going on and how we're handling it, how we're moving the kids. I know that there were, one of the issues with some of those school emergencies is, parents are getting to the school before the kids are getting away from the school, so it really complicated... away from the school. So it really, it really complicated not just the emergency response from police and fire, but it complicated the evacuation, the evacuation plan. And with social media and how in touch, I mean, I know there was an issue in Burlington yesterday where kids were finding out from kids in Burlington that someone hit a panic alarm by accident, and there was concern on that. It it travels almost faster than we can get it out currently. So just in that planning with the school committee, police, fire, we would try to use those avenues, because that's honestly our best, best way to communicate to the masses in one singular swoop.
Thank you.
I think, you know, the reality of it is, though, you're going to have a percentage of parents that are going to go right to the scene. It's just, it's going to happen, no matter how much you tell them not to, the day of the event, you're going to have to deal with that in some level. You know, hopefully, you know, if we get the word out, you know, most parents will do the right thing. But, you know, who's who's going to judge them in a situation like that?
I think that the value of this, too, the reunification, the focus on reunification is just that, is is training our educators. It's, it is obviously working in concert with the police and fire for their assistance to just navigate what you just shared, Mr. Turner, but also to, you know, create awareness for staff that if they're in such a situation, knowing that we're going to need to rely upon them for their, their, their guidance and their supervision of students until they can be reunified, what does that look like? Five or six years ago, we had a need for reunification when we had a, in the middle of the winter, a small fire at the Woburn Street, I think it was. We weren't, we didn't have the program in place and we, but it was a real opportunity to go through in a far more sort of calm situation or environment to safely move all of the students and staff here and go through the process of how do we reunify with parents? It was clearly an eye opener for myself, and I know many, to say, if we have an understanding conveyed to our staff of this is how it's generally going to happen, when the stakes are higher, the angst and the, you know, if in a, in a terrible situation, we just think that will be better for everybody. And also that understanding for, you know, our partners here to help make all that possible. Certainly, we think there's a lot of benefits from that.
Thank you. So I want to thank you all for being here today. I was wondering, Chief Desmond, if you might want to talk a little bit about the Massachusetts Red Flag Law for those who might be watching at home, and just how that might play a role in your work?
Right. Certainly. So, you know, we talked about the ability to assess threats. Well, what that law does is it allows, you know, family members and people who might be connected with an individual who have some concerns. It allows us to, you know, at least temporarily before hearing to seize weapons if they have access to weapons, which obviously is a huge problem. I mean, you know, if we could take away the access to what they use in the shootings, then certainly that's, you know, a way to curb this. But yeah, it's another tool that we have when it's connected to, you know, to assessing threats.
Right.
It's not easy, but certainly it's a lot easier than it was.
Right. And that's something that, so if you're watching at home and you, you have a concern, that's something they would share with you with the police department?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, cool. And just my second thought, Dr. Brand, you know, great presentation. Could you just elaborate a little bit more on what the current kind of hierarchical organizational structure is with regard to safety in the school department?
Do you mean with regards to the district and the building committees?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just, I mean, reiterate, like, is there a person who's kind of like specifically in charge of managing that committee?
I see. Yeah. So, I mean, ultimately, it falls to myself as a superintendent. I mean, I deliberately include myself in that work. But right now, working alongside me is Mr. Lord and one of our high school teachers, Jeremy Salerno, who's part of the district safety committee. And so really, between the three of us right now, we're collectively coordinating that committee. And so that's working with the district safety committee, where, you know, minutes are generated, agendas are generated, and then that that information in turn is shared with the district members and then passed us appropriately to the building level, building committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Eisen.
So I would like to talk for just a minute about some of the locked building codes, just to make sure that I kind of understand how they're, how they're functioning here. So the way that I think I understand it is that the main door from the classroom into the hallway, that can be locked from the inside, because that would never be used as like an egress, an exit from the building or for the room. No one is is exiting from the hallway into the classroom. Like, that would not be considered an egress. And from the other side, well, to exit, you just can unlock it, like if you have the lock on the inside. And then at the doors, the adjoining doors at the end of the classroom, or did I, is that so far so good?
Yep.
Okay. And then the, but the doors at the, at the back of the classroom, essentially, for depending whichever classroom you're talking about, every one of them can be considered an egress. Like, if you're in one classroom, then both of those doors at the back of the classroom, let's just assume there's two on either side for adjoining classrooms, either one of those could be used to exit the room and therefore sort of trying to get out of the building. And so that's why that would be considered, that it can't be locked on the other side to prevent you from passing from one classroom to the next. And then, of course, that would be true for any particular classroom that you choose. So essentially, you can't have like a double lock on both sides where, you know, I'm, on this side, I can keep you from coming in this way, but on the other side, you do the same thing to keep me from going in there. Is that the?
So I'm gonna, Debbie Chief Posey is, he's, he's very active in the state and the local county by a prevention group. So I'm gonna let him kind of take hold of this, because he's worked pretty heavily on these things.
So as I said, we're governed by codes. The building code is the base code, the fire code, piggybacks on the building code. We also get federal regulations with ADA. So we have to consider all those options when you start to go through all these things. So every year, since 2000, there's emergency evacuation plans that are required because of school shooter situations. We get reminders every year from the state fire marshal's office. So the codes I'm citing are all current codes. Some of them go back a few years, but I've referenced them all back to the current code to make sure they haven't changed. Number one, the big difference between the schools are sprinkled versus unsprinkled and existing building versus new building. So when the building's built, it's built in a new existing, the new building code. And when you have an existing, they go with the international existing building code. Massachusetts then clarifies that with amendments through the Massachusetts Fire Codes and Mass Building Code. So it's not just one reference you have to look at. You have to look at several references, several codes, several sections of each code, and it goes by your occupancy. So educational occupancy, obviously, very strict, just like an assembly, say, for a movie theater or other public places. So specifically about the doors between the classrooms, number one, they're required because all those schools are non-sprinkled. So they're automatically considered your secondary egress. As the chief mentioned, I'm part of the Essex County Fire Prevention Division. We typically have the fire protection engineer and the co-compliant state supervisor from the Department of Fire Services at our meetings, so we can get clearances. Quote from the fire protection engineer for the Department of Fire Services was, if the doors are part of your egress plan, they cannot be locked in schools without sprinklers. These doors are automatically part of your egress plan. Crystal clear, that was in March, February of 2023. The memo that we got was August 16th of this year from the state fire marshal and the acting commissioner of elementary and secondary education, joint memo, again, referencing all those codes. The egress requirements that are in the building code is, as the definition says up there, is a continuous obstructed path, vertical, horizontal egress, travel occupied portion of the building. So all those doors are automatically by code considered egress. As you mentioned, it's situational, what side of the door are you on? So the doors from the classrooms to the hallways can be locked, but that door from classroom to classroom cannot be, because the people in the classrooms assume to be authorized to be there, and you want to keep out the intruder. So the biggest thing with that would be just the communication between the two classrooms. I'm on one side, you're the teacher on the other side. I'm going to say, is your door locked? If it is, we're safe in those two rooms. If not, then you would look to barricade it. The difference in the dropping one of those temporary devices like a night lock-in versus barricading with environmental objects is what Alice, Department of Homeland Security, FBI, federal emergency management, they all say that it takes gross motor skills. It's something that the people in that room put there, they can remove it. It doesn't take any fine motor skills that are to manage during stress. It doesn't require any twisting, grasping actions that are violations of the building code. The hardware by code has to be within a certain height from the floor, minimum and maximum. That violates that. Those mounting devices that are on the doors permanently, the night lock is a device you take off the wall and drop into the mounting, but the mounting hardware has to be there. The mounting on the floor is an obstruction to wheelchairs and people that are disabilities moving through that doorway. The bottom ten inches of the door has to remain clear, so it doesn't hang somebody up going through. It violates the fire code, because even if it's temporary, the code doesn't consider difference between temporary and permanent. If we see something that impedes egress, it's an immediate hazard, has to be removed. We can't overlook that, because we become personally responsible for that. So by code, we have to consider that immediate hazard, have it removed, and then follow up to make sure it doesn't come back in. Some people say, then take that device and secure it somewhere, but that, again, defeats the purpose of making it readily available. So that doesn't work as well. That particular night lock device that was suggested was also emailed to Dr. Brand. I've got a bulletin here from the, the building code official from the 2018, and specifically addresses that, with the pictures of the same exact device, both options that they offer. We addressed that in 2018, again, with the intruder alert that came out with the building code that came from that joint memo. And again, in 2023, we sent that to Matthew Murray, who is the supervisor of the state code compliance division, specifically with that link to that device. And he sent it right back, absolutely violates fire code, building code. He double-checked it with legal from, legal counsel from the Department of Fire Services, cannot be used. So we're governed by all those different codes. There is code compliant ways to secure doors that are considered egress doors. They basically give you a 10-point checklist. That 10-point checklist is NFPA 101, supported by the National Association of State Fire Marshals, of course, the Massachusetts State Fire Marshal, and the fire code. Each one of those 10 points has several code references, international fire code, international building code, mass fire codes, mass building codes, that you have to then go through and make sure you're not violating any of those provisions. And in that case, you could then put on certain locks that are clearly obvious, don't require any simultaneous motions, within the code compliant distances, minimum and maximums. So there is a way to do it. It's not a simple way to do it. It would take a lot of time and effort, but it could be done. But that's something that would take a lot of research. So part of that school safety audit everybody's talking about should definitely include somebody who's familiar with the codes for Massachusetts. Because again, Massachusetts has very specific amendments that go above and beyond international codes, that we would have to be sure we're not violating those things.
And no one has done this in Massachusetts to try and figure?
There have been some places that have allowed things that clearly violate code. They've taken their chances. We cannot, as a credential fire prevention officer, I'm trained, we go through the code updates. Like I said, I belong to two different associations, the Essex County and the state, with the fire marshals represented sitting in the room when we ask these questions. There is no way we can knowingly go against what the codes say. Even if they changed, there are a few states throughout the country who have decided to change and go against what the fire code says and allow them administratively through changing the law. That doesn't change your liability on the local level as far as being a trained fire prevention officer, then allowing something you know violates code. So we're not allowed to do that.
And did you say earlier that the doors themselves are required, that the, that those classrooms have to have the adjoining doors?
The ones that have them, the existing ones, have to remain, because they're also in the fire code, it cites if it's part of your evacuation plan. So as part of this, when I was going all through the codes, I wanted to see, all right, how do they actually handle this at different schools, how this different school set up? And I went to every school in town, unannounced, didn't tell anybody I was coming, daytime, what I was there for. I checked in like you're supposed to through the front door. And whether it was a teacher walking by, or staff, or the administration, asked them the questions that required to by fire code. You know, what is your plan? Would you consider alternative egress? If this exit is blocked, what would you do? And the next step in that is, is part of the training. So we talk about coach changing. The fire coach is to say you had specifically four fire drills every year. They're supposed to be complete evacuation of the building. Because of all these changes and that, safety plans, the mass evacuation plans you now have to have, one of those can be an Alice drill that includes evacuation at the end of it, specifically to address all these issues. Everybody I talked to, no matter who it was, we're all on the same page. They all knew what they're supposed to do. They all knew what the secondary egresses are. They all had that in their mind of what they were going to do, how they were going to get out if that primary exit was blocked, which to me is the ultimate test that they're doing the right things, they're aware of the plan, because you have a thousand-page plan, but if people don't know it, don't know how to execute it, it doesn't help. So after that, over several days of going to all the schools, it's clear that everybody's doing what they're supposed to do, reacting the right way, know how to react in this situation, which is the best we can hope for. So that's how we we look at it now. It's just, you've got to be prepared for it. They are, they have a plan in place. They know how to react. We stay code compliant. And that's the best way to keep everybody safe, because as horrific as the incident is, it's still a very, very small percentage of the reasons why you'd have to evacuate a school. So one of the things the fire marshal cited in this year's memo was, annually, we average about 160 school fires per year across Massachusetts. That's in the Massachusetts Fire Incident Reporting System, so from the fire department is reporting them. The reason you don't hear about them, everybody will tell you, is because the building and fire codes are so strictly enforced now that you don't have the mass amount of injuries. People getting stuck in the buildings, they're getting out, they're getting away from the issue. So a lot of these incidents are now minor. If they cause a lot of damage to the school, they might make the news. If not, you just don't hear about them anymore.
And what's the difference with newer construction that has sprinklers?
So it's the building design says safety, the fire ratings on the walls, and sprinkle protection. So sprinkler protection in the building code for any building can give you up to, they say, almost 200 different concessions in everything from exit capacity, your egress corridors, how wide they got to be, travel distances. So that's why sprinklers are so important to be maintained, because all those concessions you have in the building code that allow those longer travel distances and to take you increased time to get out of the building is allowed, because the sprinklers provide that protection to hold the fire in check. So when you're out sprinklers, you're on the old building code, and you have to have those secondary egresses. That's why you do have rooms in this building that don't have a second exit, because it's sprinkled. That would not be allowed and cannot be allowed in any building that's existing building, the older buildings without sprinklers.
So thank you very much for all the depth and detail. Two follow-up things. Just to be clear, if you've got a string of four rooms with not, without sprinklers, the egress for room one includes all of the horizontal doors to room four, potentially?
It could, potentially, yes.
Okay. So you couldn't take out, make a solid wall in between rooms one and two and three and four?
So by building code, any changes to an existing school have to be evaluated by the government, it's a design professional architect and engineer, someone's qualified to make that evaluation, do a full fire code analysis, and then justify within the code the changes in the building. Very few of those things are ever going to be approved. But if they were, they'd have to be designed properly. They may have to make other concessions. They may have to, may have to sprinkle of the building, may have to sprinkle a part of the building, may have to put in another exterior door. So you want to close the doors between the rooms. You could put an exterior door from the room, so you could put a door in this wall, take out one of the windows, put a door in. That might be an approved change, if that analysis plays out with average to design professional, justifying it within the Massachusetts fire and building codes.
And then the other piece is, in terms of the safety audit, there are things we can learn there to therefore improve what we might do in our overall planning and overall not necessarily design of the building, but use of the building, evacuations of the building. So
Absolutely.
Can understand the priority. Thank you very much.
Mr. Smaha. I just want to, a couple of things. I just want to thank you guys again for being here. I know it's been said. I think this is the first time in my time that you all have been here, presenting as a group to us. So I just want to let you know that. I really appreciate that. And I also just wanted to make the comment, as we're sort of talking about and hearing about these fire codes and how in new construction, it, it can change a lot of these things. So the problems that we have in some of these older buildings with all of those doors, with a newer building, wouldn't necessarily have that, which I think sort of connects back to what we talked about. For new construction, you know, a new pre K to five school is not going to have all those adjoining doors. So, thank you.
Just a slight point of clarification. Again, I'm, the amount of detail is great. You mentioned something, there's a list of 50 things, and in a different construction, like even the wall material would speak to, like whether it would need to be sprinkled or something about that?
The building code has all the provisions for the fire ratings of your, everything from the wall construction, the rooms to the egress corridors, what the ratings have to be. That's a lot more strict in a building that doesn't have sprinklers than one that does have sprinklers. Even things I know in the past, we've had issues with the Even things I know in the past we've had issues with the amount of paper they hang on the wall. In a sprinkler building, they allow more paper to be on the wall than in a non-sprinkler building. Because a fire is going to travel up that paper and not be checked by a sprinkler system. So sprinkler system changes everything. Any perimeter we were talking about, travel distance, fire ratings, number of doors, the width of the doors, the width of the cars, all that gets affected by sprinklers.
And Paul, in your working with the Essex County group, has there been much discussion of other communities installing sprinkler systems? What has that looked like? Just anecdotally, because I know you may not have encountered that.
Most places haven't talked about retrofitting an old building with sprinklers because of the expense. But obviously in a new building, you're not allowed to build a school now.
Right.
That's not sprinkling.
Okay, thank you.
So any new building would solve that problem.
Don't need an answer now, but thank you for all your details on this. Just one follow-up I'd like to hear a little bit more about was you said that there could be a way that something could happen with the egress doors, but it was going to be a challenge. So I think just as a follow-up, more details on what that would be, because then we can kind of review that together.
It's a ten-point checklist out of the code.
Yeah.
I have it for reference with us, but each checkpoint in that list has several of the codes you have to refer to.
Yeah.
Where you go through the building, evaluate every door, go through your checklist, see what you need to do. So for instance, one example, and we'll have to be approved based on each situation, so because every school is different and how it's set up and the doors. There is a provision in the code now to put a secondary lock on a door, which would not be allowed in a new building. But for existing buildings, you could do it. It has to be a single motion for the lock, be visually obvious from a distance that it's locked or not locked, be lockable for inside the classroom and unlockable from outside the classroom. So basically, think of a cylinder lock, key on the outside in the hallway, thumb switch like you'd have in your house. It's clear if it's flipped this way, it's locked. It's flipped that way, it's unlocked. It's got to be in the correct, again, that minimum distance from the floor, above the finished floor, maximum and minimum. And it can't require a simultaneous action. So someone can't have that. You cannot have it so you have to turn the knob and flip the lock at the same time. But it does allow for the two single actions. But again, that's in a case-by-case basis. It's part of that checklist. So if you took that door, put that thumb switch on it, you could unlock the door and then push the handle basically in one motion. It's two separate actions, but one motion. You don't need to grasp it over a certain pressure. You don't have to do excessive twisting, all the stuff that the building code restricts. So someone that's disabled can still manipulate that lock. It's not like you have to put a key on the inside and get that fine motor skills. It's all gross motor actions that you'd be able to do under special situation.
Yeah. No, that's, thanks for that. Yeah, it just thinking, I know you're going to have all your meetings and your audits and stuff is maybe as you dive deep into that, maybe just see like what could be possible. You know, I appreciate the comments of some of my committee members about a new school. We also will have a lot of aging elementary schools that will be around for a while. So yeah, I think just kind of see what the options are, what can be done if anything. And once again, thanks for all the information.
Just a point of clarification on the last comment you made, the particular item you were describing, you said would have to operate the same way and be obvious locked, unlocked from both sides of the door.
No, from the egress side of the door.
Egress out, okay.
So the egress side of the door has to be obvious. On the outside, it'd be a key cylinder, just like you'd have now. But that key, that key would be available to the staff and only so after the incident, we could get in rapidly. So if something happens, that door is locked with the key, the authorized people can still get in the room. But the obvious, you know, the C, it's locked or unlocked is from the egress side. That's what all the codes are focused on, the people in the room getting out.
I think that's probably the difficult part is that we're not talking about one-way egress like we're talking about here. Like that's the egress. We're all going out that door. No one's coming in this door to get out of the building. Where in these schools, the older schools, egress could be either way. And that's what makes this a little bit more complex than just talking about that door over there is that egress could happen from either side. So it's tough to put a lock on either side that you could secure, but then if you need it from the other side and they can, they can open it as well. So it makes it pointless. That's, I think that's the biggest problem that we're facing and the challenge with these older schools is that we're using that door for egress from either direction.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. I don't need to have the answers right now, but just on those outside door, the doors coming into the classrooms, are those checked? How often are those locks checked? Is it they're working? Teacher, is that a regular thing? Do teachers let people know when they're not working? I guess, how does that, what's that look like for us?
When, if there's an issue with a lock, usually the first line is the staff or sometimes a custodian. But that's reported to the custodian first and then that is, that's put through the school dude. School dude is an application process for repair, like any issue in a building. So Paul, maybe you can speak a little bit more to it, but they're flagged and then public buildings assists the custodial staff or bring in a third party, right, to fix those?
Anytime a staff member might find that their door lock's not working, whatever, they bring it to the attention of the custodian. We have school dude maintenance system that they can put in, public buildings will address it right away. And if we have to get another key, we get another key, or they just have to repair the lock. So the staff who's using the door will let them know.
Great. Can I ask another one? Can you talk a little bit about the panic buttons and sort of what those are and where they sit? I know that we had done some installation of those, but could you kind of just update the community on what that is and where they are?
So right now, certainly I'll take a shot.
Is that the right term? Should I be calling?
No, right now we do have panic buttons or alarm systems installed for the front desk in all of our schools. I don't know if there's anything more than all of our school front offices. So that is, that's certainly a tool that is now in place and can be accessed and those are tested as well. One of the things that are, Mr. Lord's leadership has happened over the course of the last couple of years. You'll certainly recall the capital planning that has included really the rollout of phones in all spaces, instructional and offices. I don't think there's a few left that don't have a phone. Obviously a tool to be able to call the main office or to call 911 in the event of emergency. That was not in place a few years ago, but it is now. Ken, you want to add, is there anything else I didn't?
Yeah, no, just Dr. Brand said there is a panic button in your office that triggers the alarm or send contacts at least. And we do have phones now in every classroom, whereas before the older elementaries, they only had the intercom to talk to the office and they didn't have phones.
Thank you, that's helpful.
So just, there's another thing that we've done for safety is we revamped the entire town's radio system and that included the schools. There's, I think, Ken, what is it, 68? Ken? There's like 68 or 70 portable radios throughout the entire district. And what we've done is we've actually added the schools to our dispatch consoles as well. So dispatchers are monitoring that channel for emergencies 24/7. So that besides the phones, the panic alarms, we have radios that will get out of the schools because we added repeaters to all the schools to get them out. And that's also being monitored. So there are things that are happening that may not be as widely broadcast to everybody for certain reasons, but we are doing that as well. And that was a huge focus on our radio project was to revamp the schools and be able to get outside of, you know, just from inside the school to the administration area. It was to be able to get them out completely just in case you can't get anyone in the administration area. So that's also happening.
I've got one or two, if I could. Briefly, maybe for folks who aren't as clear with what the Alice drill sort of procedure is, if we could talk maybe high level about sort of what it entails. Are we, is it like a fire drill? Are we responding to the facility in that case? Or is it just sort of get the students out? Can we kind of just talk broadly about how that process works from your teams?
The Alice program came into Wilmington 2012, a lot of planning with school leadership, with Joanne Benton at the time, and with police and fire. It was very carefully vetted and researched prior to getting to this point and briefly what the program is. Alice, the acronym is a way to remember the procedures, but it's not meant to be sequential. It's not meant to be chronological and that's a huge misconception. So Alice stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. And we've been clear, police, fire, Dr. Brand and the schools, that in any such situation, if you can evacuate safely, that's what we want you to do. But in a nutshell, the alert piece could be a student alerting a teacher, a student calling 911, a teacher calling 911, okay? And with the modernization of school buildings over the past several years, you can actually incorporate that alert system into announcements throughout the building to state where you know where an intruder might be, what their dress like. So if we're in this room and an announcement was made that on the abundant life school side, there was an intruder, we would all leave. If that end of the building was on fire, you wouldn't stay, you'd leave. So that's that part of the education. Lockdown never left the program, but standalone lockdown does not work. It's been shown multiple times sadly with a lot of loss of life. Lockdown still is a valuable function, but not in and of itself. All right, so locking down plus barricading is an option. So take the same situation, there was an intruder way down the other end of the building and you were in a classroom right there and all of a sudden a violent situation erupted right outside your classroom. You're not going to evacuate. It's probably not a great option. You're going to lock down and you're going to barricade the room with environmental objects, as my counterpart said, Deputy Posey, and fortify that room, all right? And the inform piece goes back, the I in Alice, the inform piece goes back to keeping us up to date. All right, calling 911, letting the police know, you know, the shooter's outside room 220, just passed room 222, so on and so forth. The counter piece was the piece that was very difficult for people back in the day when Alice came to be. Run, hide, fight, Department of Homeland Security, alert, they're pretty much all the same thing. They're almost interchangeable. The counter piece for the C in Alice was if the intruder erupted into this room so quickly that you could not barricade, you could not evacuate, it was saying age-appropriate children and certainly staff could take objects in the room and use them to divert the attention of the intruder. There was a lot of education in this district on that piece and taking it very slow, showing people what to do, not with real objects, very careful. And actually, in some cases, older kids and certainly staff controlling a person enough to get most of the people out of the room. And again, the E is evacuation. So to be clear, if evacuation is your best option, that's what we encourage you to do. But if it's not, entering a hallway where you hear gunfire, that's not what we want you to do. If you're on a first floor, maybe exiting a window. And this is all stuff that's, as Dr. Brand alluded to earlier, the staff go through this training every year. We make sure that new staff coming in from outside the district and as kids move through all the grades, they take this education with them. There were kids, I mean, back in 2012, 2013, when we started, we're going into college, taking this information they got from Wilmington and now a bunch of other districts and using it in college. And we started to see unfortunately, some of these violent incidents erupt within colleges over the years. But the kids, they're more prepared now as are staff. Is there an end-all be-all, a complete solve to these problems? The reaction piece of it is you're reacting to someone else's decision. As Mr. DeBai alluded to earlier, you don't know where the shooter is going to go. We don't. You have to react based on the information you're getting right then and there. And the people in those rooms have to make decisions. You won't be there, I won't be there, chief won't be there. They have to make decisions. So education is the biggest piece of it. And if I can just briefly readdress what Chief Desmond alluded to with threat assessment, that's come a long way in this country. A lot of kids have been courageous enough, because they've been encouraged to by schools, to speak up when they hear something. They hear rumors, they see it on social media. Media, they're telling their parents, parents are telling the schools, the police. And similar to the fires you don't hear about, there's dozens, if not hundreds, of examples of violent actions being interrupted or stopped because people are reporting these things now thankfully. So. Thank you.
We've come a long way from shelter in place. So when I first started teaching, that's what we did, which is pretty much just sort of your lockdown in a corner. And I remember when Alice came in, you were actually at the forefront of this work because other districts, including the one where I was teaching, and Chelsea was coming to you for that training. And Wilmington was really sort of like doing this first and doing it best and then training across the Commonwealth. So I see this and I'm looking at the Alice training here and I'm like, so clear. And those of us in schools, I mean, this must be pretty common to you in, well, where you are. But I also, to just, you would think, it's funny though, being at a university, I do believe that the kids do take this with them. You know, my own kids have said, like I, I know now when I go into a place, I first see where are the exits? How do I get out? If something, and I don't think that's, when I was teaching late 90s, that was not what people were thinking. They were thinking, get down, hide, not can I get out? And so I think we've come a long way. And I think this idea of preparing kids outside of the school building is a huge asset because they're going to be in lots of places. And as they head off to colleges, that there is no security. I mean, these buildings are absolutely wide open. There's no access cards, there's no locked doors. They're open spaces. And so knowing how to navigate that, I think, is really obviously life-saving. But also just to commend you for continuing to do this work for us and to make sure that our kids are well-prepared and our staff. There's no, like I don't feel like we leave here and go, okay, we're good. I mean, I think this is such a frightening topic, but to know that we are doing what we can do and taking into consideration, well, what else can we do? I mean, I'm sitting here going, well, how much are sprinkler systems? Like how do we do that? I mean, I think that a lot's going to come from this audit to help us make even better decisions as we move forward. I don't think there's probably a perfect building, wherever you are, even if it's a brand-new building. I'm sure there are issues with brand-new spaces that we may not have those same sorts of issues in old spaces, but so thank you.
Well, and if I might quickly piggyback on that, my sort of second thing, it maybe is more of a comment than a question, but certainly feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. We've talked a couple of times tonight about this safety audit, right? Bringing in a group, an organization, whatever it is, to do this work in our buildings. But we at the district level are also doing that work. I mean, we were talking about spot checks of fire codes earlier and making sure that folks in the buildings know what the procedures are and what they're expected. So it's not as though audits, audits aren't being performed or skills aren't being taught. These things, plans are in place. I think clearly we've heard that tonight. This is an extra step. This is sort of check the checkers essentially, right? That's kind of the idea.
Yeah, that's a great point and thank you for making it. Yeah, that's very true. And you know, too, we could talk at some way, but just to continue on with the drills, but you know, you think back to the common fire evacuation or fire drill in which fire department is on scene and they're helping monitor to make sure everyone's getting out and timing it and so on. But that same, that same level of observation is happening with these Alice drills too, especially with the first ones of the year where we're coordinating in concert with fire and, sorry, with police and fire if they're able to, to be observers in school X when they're going to hold their Alice drill. And with the administration being able to sort of gauge and see how people are responding and down to the level of checking what a barricade looks like or checking whether, so that observation and and work is happening even through these drills with a lot of regularity.
One last point, kind of a wrap-up point and ties back to some things we've talked about much earlier is in terms of information available to parents, I know our website has an enormous amount of information. But we know that in certain moments in time, when something happens around the country, parents are going to want to know right then exactly what we do and how we are prepared as a town and as our schools. Having a specific spot, top right, top left, wherever, where it is our safety plan and it's always there and it's ideally very, very frequently updated so that parents in those moments can understand what our plans are and how we do this. And obviously it would have to be a little bit tailored to each of the buildings and you might have a bit further on that. But having parents needing to search through the website to understand that piece of information, I think it's one we should try and find a better way to highlight for them. I think it will answer a lot of questions and hopefully give a level of additional comfort.
Yeah, I think, I would absolutely agree. You know, I think we have, to me, it goes back to the comment made earlier around the other reality is hopefully a little bit more comfort in a parent or guardian or caregiver knowing what our plan is and how things will respond. But also the immense challenge that there is now with working against text notification from a child to parent. parent when something starts to unfold. And, you know, that's a, that's a real challenge. And the problem, I think, in the absence of a parent or guardian knowing what the plan is going to be and what the response is, is down to the level of, for example, a parent rushing to show up at a school. But we, if we have a situation going on, that parent's not going to be able to get into the school. You know, so, so I think that the more that we can educate, we talked a lot about staff and students, but also our community to know on a general level, and I know that there's always going to be some level of things that we are not going to publicize, but the degree at which broadly speaking, that can be, I, I do think has a role and a place that can be helpful.
Thank you for sure.
Can I just do one more? So when I search, so it is interesting when you go to our website and you search safety and where it brings you, and when, but you have to know to search Alice to get to Alice. So I think that probably to the public comment earlier, I'm sorry, I can't remember your name, Kessler? Sorry, I'm trying to remember. I think that having it sort of like easier to find, because if you don't really know Alice, then you're not going to know what to search for. I also see that there is a video here or presentation, looks like it's 2022, on a Zoom of some sort. I wonder if that could be updated or if there are plans to do an updated Alice presentation. I think, you know, just kind of keeping parents informed about the words and the vocabulary and sort of how to talk to your kids about it can be really helpful, other than just when, oh, we're doing an Alice drill tomorrow. And I know we get the email and it tells us, so those sorts of things, but I wonder if, you know, as part of this, it would be helpful to update some of those pieces. Okay, I'm done, I promise.
Dr. Brand, didn't we also expand Raptor throughout the, the Raptor system throughout the district for?
For, yes, for, for the, Ken, you want to talk about it again? Sorry, Ken, you shouldn't come up here.
That just occurred to me, that, that I thought that was another important thing.
Yeah, so the Raptor system is the visitor management system. So when visitors come to the building, they give us their ID, it does a sex offender registry check and, and gives them a badge to print. We now have that in all of our schools.
Right, because we used to only have it at the high school.
High school, middle.
High school and middle school, yeah, yeah.
Please. I understand that the codes are extremely complicated. I've been doing it for almost five years. We're constantly going back to Department of Fire Services for clarification. Mr. Dubai, extend the invitation, if you want to come in, I'll give you my card before I leave. I've got 12 different documents I researched just for tonight, and I'll be happy to go through it all and explain the best detail I can. Because I know that's, anybody that has any questions about it, they're free to give the fire officer a call, and we'll schedule a time to go over it. And if we have to get clarification, we'll go right to the source, because that's who we get authority from, is Department of Fire Services. So we'll go right to them, get a clear answer, and make sure we're doing the best we can.
Appreciate that. Yes, you can ask one more.
And with the codes, I mean, I, this is, I just know, I know this, I think, but the codes are there in order to make sure we're keeping children safe. Like, in this situation, we need to have this open, because God forbid we didn't, this is what could happen. I mean, the codes are not, they're not meant to hinder, but in this case, it sometimes feels like it is, because we can't do something we know we want to do, but God forbid there was something else that happened and we had done that, someone could lose a life because of that decision. So I think it's, it's the codes are, I mean, I've created, not to make our life difficult, but to keep us safe. Am I reading that, is that proper? Is that correct?
It's all life safety. That's what it is, because of the experience of decades of history is the evacuation, the safety, the building, how it's designed, has all been codified now, so that we don't repeat the mistakes of the past. So again, you don't want to fix one problem and make it more dangerous for the everyday problems that we normally have to evacuate for. Fire, a natural gas leak or anything like that, that you would want to get out of the building rapidly for.
I just think it's important to, to let people know, the fire code in general is updated every three years. There's a working committee of, of fire protection engineers, fire professionals, civilians. I believe there's some legislature in there, but the NFPA's main office is in Quincy. So people who really want to try to effect some change in the fire code, I would invite them to go there or to look at the Board of Fire Prevention Regulations at DFS. I can speak with Chief Desmond, I think, when I say that we've been working on this for years. I mean, this is not just, it, obviously, it comes up when there's a tragic event, and we understand that, and it really ramps up the conversation. But this is something that, that we work on, on a consistent basis, all these things that, especially what you've brought up, we've gone through these, we've tried, we've hammered out different ways to try to get some exception or get some traction with some of these additional barricading or locking devices. So nobody takes the safety of the town more important than we do, because that's our, not just it's our job, but it's our, it's our careers. And the kids themselves, I have family that work in the schools, that go to the schools, my children have gone through the schools. So this is not something that any one of us at this table or in our departments take lightly. And we do work pretty diligently on, on working with Glenn and Paul and the entire staff to try to come up with different ideas on, on ways to make this as safe, heaven forbid it ever happen, and hopefully not in Wilmington. So, that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Dubai, I'd like to give you a chance, if you have anything.
Thank you guys for your time. I'm not here pointing the finger at anyone, saying anyone's doing wrong. We all want the same thing, just for the kids to be safe. You can understand my concern, where if one room is compromised, they're all compromised. Couple of quick things I want to bring up, after listening to you guys, great, great points, I didn't think about the sprinkler system, so I appreciate it. I think this conversation's good. So I, I knew the codes were going to be there earlier, right? They're in place for the fire or carbon dioxide, whatever the case might be, it's for that situation, that's why it's the fire code. It's not for the situation I'm talking about, but I know it's in the way, right? Like, the fire chief here, I don't know if he's the chief, but.
Some days, some days I'm the chief, some days I like to be the chief.
So, like you said, primary and secondary egresses. I didn't hear a third egress is required, right? So there is, the wording there might be a loophole that you could get rid of one of those doors, and it would just drop the percentage, in my opinion. It's possible, I'm not sure. I haven't read the code, because when I looked up that number, there might be a number off, or that might be the building code, but I couldn't find it. And then I also heard that there are ways that this can be done, right? Like a single-hand flip of the switch, low enough for kids to reach, or handicap, whether it meets ADA requirements or not. Took me two seconds right here, I didn't watch the whole video on Channel Five. Revia just implemented a lock, first school in Mass to implement a lock, a school shooter lock. Paul Revia Elementary School is the first to install what is called life-saving locks as a proactive safety measure against active threats. I don't think Revia's going against code, I'm sure they probably did the research, and if they did the research, it's going to save us the money that we don't have to do the research, right? So let's look up what the locks would cost to install and then bring it to a vote, or whatever the case might be. From the looks of it, like I said, I didn't watch the video, it's on Channel Five, took me two seconds to find, but the picture of it looks like it goes on the hinge. So you take the pin of the hinge out, and then you put the little lock there, the pin goes back in, and it moves with the door. And then if there's an active shooter, you just flip a little mechanism out of the way, the thing drops and locks. It's labeled, it says it's in the locking position, one flip of the hand, everything the firefighter said. And I think there was maybe one more thing here. Four hundred Mass shootings this year, 365 days a year. So we're getting up there, it's definitely an issue, we need to, uh, look into, at least money-wise, if the money's the issue, I mean, we should take a vote on it, you know? The schools are outdated, I think it's time that at least we update them for children's safety. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Dubai. Gentlemen, any closing remarks, or I would extend again the committee's appreciation for your time, clearly the work that you've all put into this, it, it doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you for, for being here to talk us through it again, and, and we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Glenn, I'll give you a chance to come on back before we move on. And as we've said in the past, you are more than welcome to stay, we won't be offended if you go. Thank you all, appreciate it. All right, as we get ready for our next item, I would invite Ms. Ferretta, who is already on her way, to give us an update on transportation at the start of the school year. Dr. Brand, do you want to start?
Yeah, thank you, sure, yeah, the presentation's in the packet, we just thought it would be timely, now with the number of weeks under the belt, Ms. Ferretta's belt, to get things up and rolling. But just to take this opportunity and to extend to her, my thanks, our thanks for the great work that she's done in this, we've talked an awful lot about transportation in the past, certainly, that was like 20 seconds. But, but, you know, in comparison to, I know that you all recall the immense challenges that Ms. Ferretta had to navigate last year, this time with the change in start times, by all accounts, while still challenges that will be certainly in front here, done a tremendous job getting our year up and running, but with a few glitches here and there, certainly that she'll touch upon, by all accounts, we're off to a great start. So I want to thank her for her, her leadership in navigating this rather challenging system. Mr. Ferretta.
Thank you. We did have a really fantastic startup. It was not perfect, but it's realistically never going to be, and that's in just about every district. So while we're always going to strive for it and work towards it, realistically speaking, we'll always experience those minor delays and some issues where we need to make adjustments and, and things of that nature, similar to what we experienced this startup. So we did have a tremendous, tremendously good startup, and I just kind of wanted to start with a snapshot of our out-of-district transportation, which also experienced some delays in the first couple of weeks of school, but we started to smooth out. We currently transport 43 students to out-of-district schools or from other communities into Wilmington. Communities our students are traveling stretch from Framingham to Tingsborough to Roxbury and North Beverly. As a member of the SEAM Collaborative, our out-of-district transportation is contracted with NRT, so they handle all of our special needs transportation out of district. And this allows us to also ride-share with some of our surrounding communities who have students going in the same direction. As I stated, our out-of-district routes experience considerable delays in the first weeks of school, which is very typical. Routes that worked effortlessly last May with the same driver, students and times, did not work in the first weeks of September. Traffic has certainly increased in all surrounding communities, causing these delays, and routes that were, like I said, last year, we've seen some struggles in the, in the first weeks. It's common everywhere, and these delays tend to work themselves out oftentimes as the weeks go on. As I've said in previous meetings, our summer traffic patterns, our commuters have to find their new paths again, our school year paths. Everybody basically is learning how to stay out of each other's way again. Okay, and this year, as part of the registration system, parents signed off on rider expectations on service, it was kind of an FAQ, on what they could expect from the school bus service. And this included bus stops, an explanation of how they are determined, parent guardian responsibilities for students to, from, and while at the stop. That delays are expected in the first weeks of school. Arrival, it is a goal to have students arrive at least five minutes prior to the bell. However, due to the need to drop off at numerous locations and soft staff contracts not far outside of the bell time, this cannot always be accomplished. And specifically, you know, with many of our contracts, staff is 10 minutes before the bell. When we try to bring not only the buses in, but also our car riders into these small campuses, all within a 10-minute timeframe, it gets extremely challenging and they get backed up. Dismissal, it's a goal to have students dismissed and onto a bus within 15 minutes of their bell time, that's what picking up at both schools. Length of time on the bus, so majority of our students are home within 20 to 30 minutes of their bell time, with some of our longer routes being 40 to 45 minutes, being the furthest from their school. Capacity, 77 passengers on all our vehicles, however, I try very hard to maintain a capacity of 51, which permits two students per seat. That's what's comfortable, and that's what we like to see on the vehicles. It's, it's just overall a better ride for everybody. On occasion, it is necessary for students in grades one through eight to triple up, it's a very limited amount of students that would have to do that, but it can happen. Specifically, we see higher ridership on early release days and things of that nature. Carry-on items, such as large instruments and sports equipment, just must be small enough to fit in a student's lap. Bus assignment and riderships, students have to stay on the bus they are assigned to. Students' responsibility to know their bus number and stop, or to notify the driver if they are unsure or feeling unsafe. I really think this has had a tremendous impact this year. We had more students from my seat, I felt more students, and that could have been with the bus passes as well, confident in where they were going at the end of the day, and fewer students boarding the wrong vehicles. Consistency in cares, this always tends to be a very challenging topic. Bus ridership should always be consistent, because when we're bouncing back and forth from cares to car riders to buses with hundreds of students in a building, it becomes extremely challenging for staff to manage. This year alone, we did have one student put on a bus when they were supposed to be a car rider that day. There's no programs that can really manage all these types of schedules. So, and we do our best to accommodate families, but there is a little bit of a safety issue there. Obviously, whenever these circumstances happen, the driver's notified immediately, they're always corrected, but there's still that moment of panic where we have students not in the right place. I did a snapshot of arrival times, this is for Monday morning and the afternoon. Our GPS at the time I created this on bus number three was very, very spotty or down altogether. I can say, for the middle school and high school, the bus was arriving to the high school on time, however, in the early days of school, specifically when this was done, it was not. It was arriving at the middle school between 9:05 to about 9:08, I believe. That has since, I'm sorry, not nine, 8:05 to 8:08. That has since been, you know, we've made some adjustments with that. So it is dropping to the middle school on time, and it is arriving at the high school between 8 o'clock and 8:03 as of this week. Same with bus four, those are our two later buses for the high school, middle school programs. So a little bit more work to do on those, just to trim off a couple more minutes. They are getting to school on time, but we'd like them a little bit closer to that, that five-minute mark, more consistently. In regards to the afternoons, we are clearing out all buildings in 15 minutes. So I think we're doing really, really well there. I know for the North and Woburn Street School, one of their latest buses last year is right back up to the 325 out, and I think they have a total of three buses coming in after 325. So with, like I said, picking up within that 15-minute mark. So another one for Tuesday. And bus registration and pass information, so just some history on this. The town of Wilmington, we began using bus passes in 2020 when COVID hit, just to ensure ridership and spacing availabilities on the vehicles. We kind of did away with it with the pandemic, once we were able, the social distancing wasn't as strict. However, it's not important to bring it back this year, and the reason for bringing it back was, again, it's that little piece of students showing up not knowing where they were going. So these bus passes are all color-coded and numbered, we'll see them on the next slide, actually, that's what they look like. These bus passes, I color-coded them, and it became a very quick and easy visual for both the staff members, the bus drivers, and the students who received them by mail, for them to know exactly what vehicle they were supposed to board at the end of the day. These passes only represent afternoon buses. I felt it was really effective. I think we had two students board the wrong vehicles on the first day of school and ne- and neither one of those students were registered. They tried to register at, on the first day of school. And, you know, I think I had passes sent over to the school for them, and there was still some confusion, and again, it's that rush. But two students boarded the wrong vehicles, and I think we had two students who got off at the wrong stops, and those students also tried to register within the first week of school. So the registration system allows us to know exactly who needs a ride, so routes and stops can be created efficiently. That's really important, and when we're rooting for twenty-six hundred students, but only seventeen hundred are using the bus, it's a big difference. For a younger population, it serves as a yearly permission and confirmation on where students are going at the end of the day. I know Woburn Street School sends out confirmation for parents over the summer. However, some of our other elementary schools don't do that, and, you know, it's kind of, we're asking students where they're going. It's the students' decision to decide at the end of the day. So this kind of just provides confirmation and permission from the parents as to where we're sending them. And as I stated, the bus passes were used to combat some of the issues with students boarding the wrong vehicle. Unregistered riders and implications. When families fail to register students on time, it has an impact on the vehicles, it has an impact on the drivers, school staff, and the parents. And it involves a tremendous amount of safety concerns. For the drivers, they're stuck trying to figure out where is it safe for that student to get off? For the staff members, they're scrambling at the end of the day to ensure, you know, this group of students is going in the correct direction. And yes, so, and currently, students who are not registered on time are processed as quickly as possible. However, if they do not have an appropriate stop, they cannot utilize another stop on the route until updates are made on, I'm sorry, they can utilize another stop on the route until updates are made. So if these parents did not register their child, they can opt to use another stop somewhere else on the route. And on the third week of school, we'll update those route sheets. And the reason for that delay is, we found in the past, when we're throwing route sheets around between myself and NRT and the bus company, we have a large point of failure. Working quickly on daily changes in a short period of time to ensure students receive passes and could access the bus also presented safety issues. I made some mistakes. I don't make a whole lot of mistakes. But when I'm trying to work that quickly, I made more mistakes. It would be beneficial to enforce a registration and implications for not registering. Setting a date when registration opens, again, similar to our kindergarten practices. So on kindergarten, we're extremely firm. Register, and then it's closed until the third week. And because those routes are so personalized and so customized, we keep that very, very strict. And it's also in fairness to the other students on board as well, so that their schedules aren't changing constantly in those first days of school. Okay, so those were the bus passes. They were mailed out with zip ties just about a week before school started. Some of the challenges we are having today, construction, yes, we know it's happening. Yes, we can plan, but, you know, it's construction. So we have a lot of long-term projects happening in town here and across the state. It's not just here. And we have population increasing throughout the entire county. Additionally, navigation systems are directing commuters off the highway and into town during heavy traffic periods. While we're aware all of this is happening, it doesn't always permit a change in the outcome. So specifically with traffic, you have two options. We can avoid the area, or we can start earlier. Those are our two choices. When we have students living in all different ends of a construction zone, unfortunately, we are traveling there, so we're forced with the start-earlier option. Enrollment at the Wildwood School is up twenty-five percent from last year, which is rather considerable for one building. And the campus struggles to support that traffic. So we're feeling the pain getting in and off Carter Lane. At the start of the year, different techniques were used daily to make loading and unloading move a bit quicker. I know Mrs. Bissell is still trying new techniques, I believe, today, just to see how we can improve upon that. The number of families who have failed to register for transportation on time makes the early days very challenging. This year, we had approximately a hundred and fifty families register the week school began. So that's a hundred and fifty emails and communications in between those families trying to get passes out, plus, you know, just the families who have questions and concerns and trying to handle those as well. The number of students who boarded the wrong vehicle, like I said, was drastically reduced this year, and I really do feel that was due to the bus passes. They had the impact I was looking for, and I thought they worked really well. Those are not, you know, I know they're probably going to fall off bags as months go on. It's something, so this, it was just really for the start of the school year, just to get the students and the drivers into schedules and everybody know where they were going. So update on bus drivers, all of our big bus routes are filled with consistent drivers. NRT began the school year with what they felt was an adequate amount of seventy drivers for out-of-district transportation. But with increased traffic and construction, the same driver cannot travel to the same communities and do the same thing they did just last spring. They were forced to split up some of their routes, so that required additional drivers. So I think we're a little bit, not where they'd like to be at the moment. But we're getting there. They also experienced a tremendous amount of students being added from other districts. So I am very, very diligent with getting the communication over to them as early as possible, accounting for all the students, because when we start, again, just like when I have late registrants, when they have a tremendous amount of students adding on the week before school starts, the week of, that slows down stabilizing the routes and causes additional delays as well. Moving forward for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, all students who plan to use the bus the first week of school must be registered by August first. Students who are not registered by August first are not guaranteed to receive a bus pass and will be unable to ride the bus the first week of school. Those students registered after August first may not be able to ride a bus until the second week of school or until such time as a bus pass can be issued. Realistically speaking, I always and will always register people as they come in and as quickly as possible. However, when we get into that week of school, we're at a point where we need to say, all right, we can't. We can't do this. You know, you have to hold off. We're going to open the registration. We'll get you back on for, you know, maybe the second week of school and do things appropriately. Okay, that's all I have.
Mr. Turner.
So first of all, thank you very much. I really appreciate the depth of this. And it is clear this year went much better than last year.
Yes.
So thank you, it's really, really appreciated. One question I have that would be a potential topic for you in Town Hall. I'm aware of certain towns, particularly in the New York metro area, where they've, I'm not exactly sure the path, gone to the GPS providers and said, these routes are no longer for through traffic. And as a consequence, they no longer reroute off the highways going into Manhattan through these side towns in New Jersey. So potentially, if we could get some corridor of Woburn West High Street Middlesex off that list, because it appears, this anecdotal, that consistently, when there's heavy traffic on those roads, it's because ninety-three is blocked. And people are just dumping off because GPS tells them to. So I don't know, and perhaps it could only be temporary when there's construction or something. But if there were a way to get those removed, obviously, people that know it, people that lived here a hundred years would still do it. But people who aren't as familiar, it might reduce it a little bit, which would allow the buses to flow a little bit better on that side, which seems to be the most problematic.
Yeah, we, that side and also the sixty-two bridge has become very problematic, not just because of the Butters Road project. It was just, we've seen increased traffic there over the years. I'll have to speak with the town engineer in regard, and also, I would assume, traffic and safety in regards to how can we achieve this? And what steps have to be taken to do so?
Yep, no, thanks. I'd just like to echo Stephen's comments. You know, the buses just seem to go a lot smoother as a whole this year. My question's about the one part that maybe is having a little bit of an issue. It's around the Wildwood students. We've received some feedback about that, where the buses are going to earlier and earlier times. And I think the changes have been causing some confusion with parents and some drivers and everything like that. So I was just wondering if you can elaborate on, like, what's the current state with the Wildwood buses? And then also, what are you actively doing to try to address that issue?
So, one of the biggest challenges, so we have four Wildwood buses. Two do non-start before seven, the other two are picking up earlier. I'd like to specifically address, you know, our bus one that's covering that Woburn Lowell corridor area. What makes our kindergarten route so challenging is there's such a small amount of student population on the buses. These vehicles aren't even half-capacity, yet we're still covering the entire town. And some years, we get a little unlucky with how scattered they are and vice versa. And, you know, we have to make accommodations for that. In regards to the construction, yes, we know the construction is happening, and we can make plans around that. Like I said, two options, we're going to avoid it, we're going to start earlier. Okay, so with the North and Woburn routes, I was able to eliminate a bus from the mix, have him do more for the Shawshank West side, and free up a bus that could begin earlier in that construction zone. Unfortunately, with the kindergarten routes, such as, we're only servicing one grade level here. So there's not a bunch of buses to play around with, you know, and they're still covering that large area. And with the construction, yes, we know it's happening, but the construction's not consistent. So what we found is, is when kindergarten started, which we knew was going to happen, but I can't plan a year's worth of transportation because of a week of construction. So we had the Woburn Street, we'll call it the South Side by Lucci's, completely shut down. Buses were permitted access, but there were days that wasn't communicated with Mastiot. So we had that little hiccup. Okay, so that caused us some challenges. We also had a strike on Main Street that I didn't know was happening until after the fact. I don't think the police department knew either. But that caused a backup of trucks on Main Street. We had one other incident, oh, Butters Row. We knew about Butters Row, it was totally planned for Butters Row. I didn't realize they were shutting down one lane of Main Street for an entire day to stage for that. I missed that memo, I don't, I don't know where that came from. But that also happens in the mix of it all. So there were these other little incidents, you know, that happened in that short period of time that caused so much, you know, variances. And there's a lot of pressure from that bus as well to get the high school, the middle school on time, because they were also running late. So yes, we did move back the pickup time in order to accommodate for this early year stuff to get our middle and high schoolers to school on time. On one particular day, there was miscommunication. It was time to move the pickup time back up closer to seven. And like I said, I communicated that with NRT, but there was a miscommunication with the driver somewhere. He picked up even earlier on one particular day. But we are back on track, well, I feel we are. We've been consistently picking up closer to seven o'clock. I think we're at six fifty-five on that route at our first stop. That bus does travel through that intersection one, four times? So picks up on all corners of it. So specifically with that, I think we're going to see, you know, a lot more consistency. But with that one section, every time they do the construction there, it's one section Woburn Street is closed, which changes traffic patterns, which changes our abilities to access that. And then, you know, in a few weeks, this side is going to be closed. And in a few more weeks from that, we're going to impact one lane of Lowell Street. So it's really challenging to make plans when the construction itself is constantly changing. Like, we've been a bit more successful with the Woburn Street closure between Concord and Federal, because it's consistent. It's consistent, we have a plan, the town's working with us, we're doing great with that. But with the Mastiot project over there, it's a bit different.
Yeah, I live near there, and I can tell you, they were quiet for like a month, and then all of a sudden, they're like, oh, we're just going to repave everything and widen everything, and it was like, that came out of the blue. So I definitely know what you mean. And then now it's quiet there again. So I don't know when they're going to set up again.
If I could, I just, I think we just, you know, and I myself forget about it. I'm sure Ms. Ferretta doesn't. But keeping in mind, and I know it's not helpful or satisfying for some folks that may be struggling with this, but it is the only school in which we're transporting students literally, you know, from one side to the other. And then there is the Carter Lane campus that, you know, when we were presented with the Wildwood interim option, you know, however it was, no, two years ago, a year and a half ago, I don't think we could have totally envisioned or planned for all of the potential impact. And I think this is one of them, those realities of transporting students from the Wildwood, you know, all the way across town to the middle school. And then just the congestion and traffic on Carter Lane campus. Many of you know Carter Lane, even before the Wildwood moved in there temporarily, there was a lot of traffic congestion in the best of times. And we inserted a fourth school there. And that's been more challenging than I think we could have envisioned. We didn't analyze that to the depth that was, as you'll recall, sort of like the only option we had that we needed to pursue. And we're, so folks are working hard to make it as efficient as we can. But these are some challenges that, you know, are going to still have to be contended with, unfortunately.
And we're seeing, actually, because, in my opinion, when kindergarten registration opened on September twenty-third, meaning parents could begin resuming the bus, not just register, but routes would be updated. And I want to say, since the start of the school year, we have probably twenty percent additional riders at the Wildwood entering onto the buses. And part of that is the parents don't want to deal with the Carter Lane traffic, which is great, we're taking them off the road. So we keep seeing our ridership at the Wildwood increase. The school population has increased, and we're seeing our bus riders increase. And compared to previous years as well, you know, when I have a particular student who's a little bit of an outlier, and I can put them on a minibus, you know, in one direction just to help the route move a little smoother, I'll do that. I'm finding this year, we're having lots of bigger clusters. So too many students that I could possibly move them to a minibus. So I'm forced to stick with the big bus, and we're still covering a tremendous amount of ground.
Mr. Isso.
So looking ahead to next year, and as we begin to get into the budget season, as we'll be talking about momentarily, are you feeling comfortable with our current bus fleet? And seventeen, I think we have, we have now?
So we have seventeen buses. Obviously, if we add vehicles, things go even better. It's just a matter of if you decide if those financial, if that, if you want to take it there, if that money could be better suited elsewhere other than transportation. I do think we're in a respectable place in regards to it. And in my opinion, I would keep it here. However, if, you know, you and the community would like to see improvements, those improvements would only come with additional vehicles.
Mr. Golden, then Mr. Smaha.
I want to say, thank you very much for the presentation. You know, I think that it makes a lot of sense to kind of go for the variables that can be controlled. And I think, you know, one thing that I really like is, yeah, like, if folks aren't going to register on time, like, that, you know, it's unfortunate that it kind of has to be like a cutoff, but there has to be some kind of incentive, because that is one of the main variables you can control. You know, I wish we could all just, like, know intimately Mast Dot's kind of like enigma plans, right, I'm on the road, and I'm like, why are we doing this right now? It feels like horrible. But that's a variable that can be controlled, right, getting parents to sign up earlier and kind of giving them that limit. So I think that makes a lot of sense.
Smaha.
Yeah, so this is, I think, like, a big improvement over last year. I think it's important to acknowledge that this is a problem in communities all across the state. It's not, this is nothing new or unique to Wilmington. There are some factors, I think, that make it unique to Wilmington. The fact that we operate so many buildings. And so I'll reiterate, just as I did with the safety, that having one pre-K to five building is going to make transportation in Wilmington much smoother.
Yeah.
And...
I did the math. The time we spend transporting in-between buildings, dropping off and picking up, it's about the equivalent of twenty minutes every morning and twenty minutes every afternoon. That's a considerable amount of time. You know, don't get me wrong, not everybody can go in at exactly the same time, because we'll need a fleet to increase to do such, something like that. But with the more condensed, like I said, the kindergarten routes are inefficient. I think we have one large bus with four or five children on it for one of our kindergarten routes. But unfortunately, that bus has to cover a specific area and cannot even assist because of the distance. So those are running inefficiently. And then, yes, like I said, just commuting in between the schools is, it's challenging. And, you know, just kind of my observations at the start of the school year, the buses can travel from the Shawshank to West, and almost half the amount of time, they can go from the West to the Shawshank. Yep, takes that. It's about a five-minute ride to go from the Shawshank to the West, but it's about a 10-minute ride to go from the West to the Shawshank. At the start of the school year, we have improved on that, but it's still longer. And it's just the direction of traffic flow at that Shawshank intersection.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For the update.
All right, our last item of new business, as Mr. Ragsdale alluded to, is the draft fiscal year '26 budget calendar. Who could believe it already? Mr. Ruggero, you are up, sir.
Thank you. Yep, it's that time of the year again, so in your package, just the draft budget development schedule for informational purposes.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns, observations? Succinct as always, Paul. Does anybody have any thoughts, questions, feedback, concerns, issues? Mr. Turner?
Just one point for everyone's information. We are starting to plan on the budget subcommittee's schedule. Most likely, we would start four weeks from now with the first meeting and go for several meetings thereafter. Immediately going to start doing outreach to FinCom to try and schedule some times to meet with them in advance, so they can have some understandings of our budget drivers this year. And so that's the plan on that side, but thank you very much for the calendar.
Paul, if I could briefly, I seem to remember that in years past, we had, we, the committee has had a date or two in here that were sort of subject to change based on FinCom or something. Is that the case here? I don't see them called out specifically.
Yeah, so I think, based on the town calendar, one of the issues we've had is the town manager's budget presentation. Depending on when that is, we typically have a school committee meeting the Wednesday before that. So I think it's set up right now. Our school committee meetings are set up to address that. If that meeting, the town manager's meeting should change, we may have to alter the...
Okay, that makes sense. I thought that, that, that's right. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Mr. Isa.
I don't know, I can't remember if this has usually been, been on the calendar itself, but between the preliminary budget presentation on December 18th and then the recommended budget on January 22nd, I know that in between that, there is a lot of communication with the town manager and with the town in general about what, you know, what they feel the town can support is. Have we put that on the past, or is it just kind of understood that between those two, there's communication, and there's not like a particular meeting date that necessarily?
Yeah, the calendar is similar to what it's been in previous years. We don't typically have a set date. We kind of, right around the December 18th date, we'll reach out to the town manager and try to come up with a date to meet. Sometimes it's been during the Christmas week. Sometimes it's been, last couple of years, I think it's been before that. So it's kind of, it's within that time, you know, in that period. We try to have it done before early, early, early January, because once we have that, there's maybe work that we need to do here to prepare for, to fill the school committee in on what I want, yes.
Very good. If there's nothing else, I don't think we need to vote or anything at this point, right? Okay. All right, that concludes new business. Moving right along to old business, the contract negotiation teams specifically related to the administrative assistance and the nurses bargaining units. You'll recall, at our last meeting, we discussed teachers and administrative assistants and sort of tabled this portion of it until this meeting. So Glenn, I don't know if you have anything you want to add, or?
It's okay if you don't.
No, we still, we certainly have not received notice yet from any of the units to commence successor contract bargaining, so don't need to take any action yet on this. It's not something that is imminent, but certainly, at some point, we'll need representation.
Okay. Have we given any thought? Is there anybody that is interested, willing, and able to serve on either of these? I know to Dr. Brand's point, we don't, it's not imminent, so we don't necessarily need to do these two this evening, but certainly can if there are folks who are so inclined. Dr. McCallough.
Throw my hat in.
Do you have a specific one, or you'd want to take them both?
You know, I've never done it, so maybe I'll just do one. Go with admin assistance, I guess.
Okay.
Alphabetical.
I'm not volunteering myself, but I know that I was, I was on this nurses before, and with my work schedule, it was, it was really too difficult for me to actually be a part of kind of any of these contract negotiations.
Sure.
So I would not be eligible to do either of these, so if Dr. McCallough wanted to be part of one of them, there would be another spot there on that.
Dr. Bryson.
And I'm going to serve on the teachers, which means I will not serve on these. I could be a backup, but I wouldn't, so I'm not going to throw my name in, even though my name is there. So I would appreciate if someone else could take one of those on.
I think you were just on last year.
No, I know, I know.
Point of information, how many members are we looking to put on these teams for these other bargaining units?
Yeah, so for the, for the admin and the nurses, I think in previous years, we had done a member and an alternate, if I recall correctly, so.
Being an alternate on the teachers group, I would be open to being voluntold to do the nurses commit a bargaining unit.
Okay. Yeah, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, in the past, these units have often waited, not until the teachers were done, but sort of, the teachers will sort of negotiate, start first, and these often come as they're progressing, so...
That's been pretty consistent, right, for the past contract approaches? Certainly, most recently, but even going back in time. So that would be the anticipation, unless there was a, you know, a will or desire to explore a different approach, you know, but that's generally been the approach that those units have taken, so.
Okay, so...
Given that we have some names in the hat, maybe we just, like, we circle back? Maybe we have these kind of on deck, and then if we, we get the request, it's like, cool, if people volunteer, and like, we'll go from there, wait for further information or further clarity.
Yep, that's true. Fine.
I mean, I might be open to jumping into one of these, one of these other negotiations, but I am on the Unit A negotiation, so.
Right.
It'd be a big one.
Okay, so let's say tentatively, Mike for the admin, Nick for the nurses, and, for lack of a better expression, we can cross that bridge when we get to it.
Sure.
Good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
You will, when you cross that bridge, have to do a formal vote.
Yes. Yes, yes, we will. Well, in that case, that concludes old business. Moving on to...
One point of clarification with regards to the EA. Am I the alternate, or are we both co-serving on that, yourself and myself?
That's right. I was, we had discussed that previously. Yeah, I think, if I recall correctly, the EAs had one, it was just the one rep last year.
So I believe it was Jen and Jesse that all of that swapped back and forth from EA to admin assistance. So one was always the primary and the other was the alternate.
Okay.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
You're the alternate, Steven.
Perfect, good to know. Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me. Okay. Moving on from old business to other reports, subcommittee reports. I know legislative, you guys have met, there's some talk about a budget presentation or maybe a budget specifically, but, no.
Next meeting.
And the resolutions as well, right?
Yep, and I think you wanted us to have that ready for next meeting, too. So Nick and I will be very busy.
Speaking of legislative, one point we discussed last spring, when we talked about school choice, was the fact that the legislature has not moved the number related to financial reimbursement to districts in years. And so I'd be curious if at least an outreach could happen to our state reps to say, is there anything under consideration that the state might change that number? I believe it's $5,000 upwards, because for some of us in that conversation, that was a relevant fact as to the potential financial impact of allowing kids from other towns to come into our district. So if, at least, a quick check on that could happen.
So you will have that opportunity to ask Rep. Robertson at next school committee meeting.
That's a very good point. He will be, I will, I will remember that.
But we can also reach out to Senator Feingold.
Okay, very good. Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
And I know the budget subcommittee is gearing up.
October 23rd is the tentative first date for a meeting.
Policy is meeting next week.
Next Thursday, yes.
So nothing formal to report at the moment, though we will be starting some work coming up here, so, thank you. Correspondence this evening?
None this evening.
Sir, future school committee dates and other notable items. As was discussed previously, the school building committee's next meeting is at 6:30 PM in this building, in this room, or in the auditorium?
It is in this room.
In this room, okay. Now, October 9th is our next regular school committee meeting at 7:00 PM here in this room. October 23rd, 2024, district-wide flu vaccine clinic from 3:30 to 6:30 PM in the middle school cafeteria. And on October 23rd, same day, the regular school committee meeting at 7:00 PM here in this room. Mr. Turner, what did we miss?
On October 1st, the high school orchestra will be having a concert in the courtyard from, at 6:00 PM.
Excellent. Mr. Golden?
The wellness subcommittee will have a meeting on October 8th as well, if my Google calendar is accurate, which means back-to-back subcommittee activities.
All right. Subcommittee work is ramping up. Very good. Thank you. With that, one final motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Mr. Rags, your second, Mr. Golden, all those in favor? And we are adjourned. That is unanimous. Thank you and good evening. Thanks.
Good night, everyone.